cleanup can do to turn Hollywood into a more thriving, vibrant, and people-friendly neighborhood. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
The East Kowenga Alley or Ika Alley is located just south of Hollywood Boulevard and east of Kowenga Boulevard with its entrance off Selmar Avenue. Little Tokyo meanwhile is already an established destination. Its rich history has always been a draw for locals and tourists. And as Cindy San Luis reports, Little Tokyo residents and businesses are celebrating that history by honoring the past.
Downtown LA's Little Tokyo is a major historic, cultural, and civic center for Japanese-Americans living in Southern California with its roots dating back to the 1880s. LA's Little Tokyo is only one of three remaining Japan towns in the state alongside San Francisco and San Jose. A recent dedication ceremony unveiled new additions to Little Tokyo.
So it's really, really tremendous and significant that this enclave has been noted and recorded and preserved.
A three-sided obelisk serves as the new Japan Town marker. It depicts important phases of Little Tokyo. Immigration of the Japanese to the area 125 years ago, the Japanese internment during World War II, and the re-establishment of the community following the war.
And we take pride in preserving our culture and heritage. And this is a perfect example of what we have been trying to do.
The newly dedicated Tori Uoma Plaza is adjacent to the original home of the Union Church, which opened in Little Tokyo in the early 1900s.
We are dedicating this plaza in memory of Reverend Howard Noburu Toriumi, who was a highly regarded minister of the Union Church in Little Tokyo and was instrumental in the establishment of several significant community projects.
We are proud that there's a piece in Little Tokyo that is just to the north of our current church that represents all the hard work of Reverend Howard Toriumi and so many others to not only keep but then to extend and continue the cultural heritage of Little Tokyo.
And we're quite honored and my dad would be quite humbled by it.
Three, two, one.
The Aiso Street Parking Garage was designed and constructed as a new 300-space, multi-level, subterranean parking garage to serve the Little Tokyo Shopping District as well as to provide parking for visitors to the various city facilities and the federal and Caltrans buildings. With its new businesses and new visitors, Little Tokyo continues to evolve, adding to a rich 125-year history with many more years to come. I'm Cindy San Luis for LA this week.
For more information on Little Tokyo, visit the Little Tokyo Community Council website at www.littletokyo.la.org. Once a year, LAX opens its doors to area students for Job Shadow Day. It's an opportunity for young people to go behind the scenes to learn about careers in aviation. Anita Bennett has the story.
There's a lot more going on at LAX than just departures and arrivals. It's Job Shadow Day for students from three area schools.
I learned about their airports and that this is the third airport, most busiest, third busiest airport in the United States of America.
They spent several hours shadowing airport workers, including motorcycle officers.
The goal of this program is to introduce students from the surrounding community to the jobs and career opportunities that are available here at the airport.
Next up, fire crews who explain what it takes to become an airport firefighter. Then it was time to learn about some of the airport's less visible jobs like information technology. But the day would not be complete without a chance to simulate piloting a plane.
To go in the air, you pull back.
The students also got a lesson on what it takes to keep travelers safe, including an up-close demonstration from a canine unit. Beatty the Dog and his handler got help from a seventh grader who suited up in police gear to show how canine cops sniff out trouble.
And he finds what he's looking for and he sits down and give him a big round of applause.
Dog was really calm when he was around. It's toy, but when, when he was serious, he was serious. He was working around sniffing for anything that might have been drug-related.
This is one lesson the students admit they won't soon forget. At LAX, I'm Anita Bennett for LA this week.
LAX has been hosting its annual Job Shadow Day for more than 10 years. But it's not just students who are learning about job opportunities, it's adults as well. The mayor recently partnered with a famous fashionista to help female entrepreneurs succeed. Gil Reyes has more.
I was like, genius!
We can't reveal the innovative new ideas these women have up their sleeves. Someone might steal them. Instead, this story's about turning those concepts into cash.
Is it sellable? Is it scalable? Can you have people under you and you basically not do anything? You know what I mean? Like a mentor.
This mentoring workshop given to up-and-coming female business owners, hosted by famous fashion designer and philanthropist Tori Birch.
Where they can stay in touch and really make connections and learn about what each other are going through.
Birch, whose clothing line is known the world over, has a soft spot for new business owners, particularly single mothers. Birch says they're the most likely to start their own business during this economic crisis, yet they're also among the first to be denied loans from banks. That's why she launched the Tori Birch Foundation in 2009. It's provided loans of up to $50,000 for female clients.
We're so thrilled to work with women. They're amazing as far as leaders in business. And I think that they are the key to getting our country back on track.
Mayor Antonio Villarigosa says the fastest-growing businesses in Los Angeles are owned by Latinas. Part of the reason why he signed into effect LA's Business Inclusion Program last year. The program reserves about one-quarter of all city contracted projects for the underdog or small locally-owned businesses. One of the goals is to even the playing field for minorities and women in the business world. Gil Reyes for LA this week.
For information on future Tori Birch business workshops and how to acquire loans, visit her website at toribirchfoundation.org. A dark period in history is remembered involving the unjust deportation of Mexican-Americans, a sting operation against those who illegally use disabled parking placards, and city employees go green. These stories in City Beat. The Los Angeles City Council recently passed a resolution remembering the plight of some 2 million Mexican-Americans forcibly removed from the US during the Great Depression. La Plaza de Cultura y Artes has dedicated a plaque at its campus downtown commemorating the stark time in history. Retired Congressman Esteban Torres was only three years old when his father was unjustly deported.
I found out later through my mother that the Bureau of Immigration had raided the mine, rounded up all the Mexicans without notice, put them on buses, and shipped them back to Mexico. And I never saw my father again.
The resolution introduced by Councilmember Richard Alarcon recognizes the Mexican-American Legal Defense Fund's efforts to pursue legal action on behalf of those individuals and families. The mayor is asking all city employees to take part in the Green Angel Challenge, which aims to cut down on the city's energy and water consumption. Councilmembers Eric Garcetti and Jose Wezar urged city employees to lead by example.
And we shouldn't be asking anything of the public that we shouldn't do ourselves as a great city. In fact, we should aim to do even more, and that's what I like about this campaign. It is recognizing that we, as a city organization, have a responsibility to do more and be at the rule on conserving energy and not the exception.
Garcetti is urging city workers to report leaky faucets and to turn off electronic equipment at the end of the day. Councilmember Dennis Zine recently participated in a sting operation conducted by the LA Department of Transportation and the LAPD, targeting individuals who are fraudulently using disabled placards to park for free in metered spots. In the early morning hours, this team took to the streets and nabbed several placard abusers who now face some hefty fines. Zine says this problem, which is especially concentrated in the downtown area, hurts local businesses whose customers can't find parking and hurts the city which suffers from lost revenue. Councilman Zine plans to introduce legislation asking the city to crack down on these types of parking abuses. Ansel Adams was best known for his iconic photos of Yosemite National Park, but for one week, the famous photographer focused his camera on the city of Los Angeles. Anita Bennett takes us to a new exhibit featuring these rarely-seen photos.
These rare pictures show the city when gas cost just 10 cents a gallon and life was a lot simpler. They were taken in 1940 and are now being shown off in a new exhibit called Ansel Adams, Los Angeles.
There's a lot of famous locations here. Some of these places still exist. A lot of them don't, like the Derby, for example. The building's still there, but it's no longer the Derby Restaurant.
The iconic photographer snapped hundreds of photos while on assignment in LA for Fortune Magazine. Before he died, Adams donated the negatives to the Los Angeles Public Library, which teamed up with downtown's Darkroom Gallery to put together this exhibit. The pictures include everything from City Hall to traffic that would be considered minor by today's standards.
The quality of these black and whites are just mind-blowing. They're incredible, some work that I've never seen before of Ansel Adams, including what looks like surrealistic stuff where he's got one shot at a bowling alley where it's like a slow shutter speed where somebody's bowling.
The exhibit is free and will be open to the public until March 17th. I'm Anita Bennett for LA this week.
The limited-edition pictures will eventually be sold off with prices starting at $2,500 each. A portion of the proceeds will go to the Los Angeles Public Library system. In this week's list of things to do, a 340-ton boulder makes its way to a local museum, how you can catch a glimpse, reptiles at the LA Zoo, and learning how to fold origami. By now, you've likely heard about the transport of a 340-ton megalith from a quarry in Riverside that's making its way to the Los Angeles County Museum of Art, or LACMA, to star in Michael Heizer's Levitated Mass exhibit. The 21-feet-tall boulder began making its way from the quarry on February 28th and is expected to arrive at LACMA on Saturday, March 10th. To catch a glimpse of the moving rock being transported by Hanjing Shipping, go to lacma.wordpress.com to track its route and where it will be parked along the journey for public viewing. LACMA is located at 5905 Woolshire Boulevard. For museum information, go to lacma.org. If you've ever been fascinated by the Japanese art of paper folding, or origami, now's your chance to try your hand at it at the Target Free Family Saturday Event: Folding Paper, on March 10th from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the Japanese-American National Museum. The event is being held in tandem with the museum's new exhibit, Folding Paper. Sponsored by Target, these special Saturdays are filled with fun activities, giving families unique ways to learn, play, and grow together. You can even help the museum make the longest paper chain ever made, as visitors contribute paper links throughout the day. The museum is located at 100 North Central Avenue in Little Tokyo. Go to j a n m dot org for more information. And the LA Zoo's Reptile Exhibit will open to the public starting on Thursday, March 8th at 10:00 AM. The exhibit, called The Lair, which stands for living amphibians, invertebrates, and reptiles, will house over 60 species from around the globe, as well as habitats for various unique and endangered amphibian, invertebrate, and reptilian species. Highlights include the world's largest amphibian, the Chinese giant salamander, which will inhabit a mountainside stream with underwater viewing for visitors, and a dazzling array of snakes, including the green mamba, a fast slender snake from Africa. The zoo is located at 5333 Zoo Drive. Go to lezoor.org for admission prices and other information. And remember, you can find this information on our Facebook page, and that's a look at some upcoming things to do. If you like sandwiches, then hopefully you didn't miss Kenoga Park's recent centennial celebration, where one big sandwich stole the show. Leading the charge was Councilman Dennis Zine, who proudly joined the owners of Kenoga Park's Cavarretta's Italian Deli and volunteers in building a 100-foot Italian sandwich. The occasion: to commemorate Kenoga Park's 100th birthday.
Kenoga Park has been very good to me. I've been working at Kenoga Park for the last 31 years and has afforded me to have a, have and support a wonderful family. And so for that, Kenoga Park deserves a celebration. So happy birthday, Kenoga Park, at 100 years.
The event was held at Cavarretta's Italian Deli, which has been in Kenoga Park since 1959. Cavarretta's donated the main ingredients to build the sandwich, with the proceeds from the sale of the sandwiches benefiting 12 local nonprofit organizations. This event is just one of many that are part of a year-long celebration of Kenoga Park's 100 years as a community.
I'm very proud that it's been here for a long time.
It's been great watching families come in. And eventually, as I got into the business and dealing with the public, I started seeing those families grow and the generations come in to play and it's been really an honor.
A special point of pride for Councilman Zine is Kenoga Park's designation as an All-American City.
It's interesting that of all the communities of Los Angeles, there's only one community has the designation All-American City, and that's where we are now, Kenoga Park, part of the great Kenoga Park West Hills Chamber of Commerce.
Aside from the main event of sandwich building and eating, other activities included face painting and coloring for kids, as well as raffle and several fun contests with prizes.
And every organization that's here, it's representing good for this community.
A community united by 100 years of history and by a common commitment to making Kenoga Park an even better place to live the next 100 years. And that's it for this edition. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week.
Hi, I'm Kristy Oldham in Los Feliz. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel. Would you like a mustache for that?
Okay, good morning. Good morning. I want to welcome everybody to the council meeting today. It is Wednesday, March 7th. It is my understanding that we do have a quorum at this point in time. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Buscaeno, Cardenas, Englander, Garcetti, Wezar, Corretz, Kirkory, Labanche, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Zine, Wesson. Ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Corretz moves, Mr. Zine second. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Perry moves. Mr. Buscaeno seconds. And where are we at now? Can we direct our attention to the agenda?
Absolutely, sir. We're currently at 11 members.
Okay, why don't we go through the first set of items?
Very good. Mr. President, items one through five are items noticed for public hearing.
Mr. Clerk, any cards?
No, sir. No cards.
Members one through five specials. One through five specials. Okay, let's open and close the public hearing on the remaining items. And with that, prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next, thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, Mr. Clerk.
Items six through 12 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Specials, members, specials.
We have number 12 for Mr. Rosenthal.
12 for Bill? Any other specials? All right then, Mr. Cardenas.
Um, the con plan, since it's not prepared, could we hold it on the desk?
Yes. What item is that?
Number 11.
Okay, so on item 11, let's hold that on the desk. With that said, let's prepare the vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, items 13 through 22 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Without, without objection, those items are before us, Mr. Zine. 14 special?
13 special. For a substitute motion, Mr. President.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, that leaves us with, that leaves us with, I believe, item 15?
15 through 22, sir.
And, uh... I see no other, are there cards on these items?
Mr. President, the sergeant-at-arms is making his way to us now.
All right.
No, sir. No cards.
Okay, then let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, where are we now?
Mr. President, items 23 through 26 are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
Yeah, why don't we hold them on the desk until the chair of that committee arrives? And that'll bring us to, well, no, well, can we do items 28 and 29?
Yes, sir. Miss, uh, on, on...
Zine, Mr. Zine?
On the continuation agenda, items 28 and 29 are items for which public hearings have been held. Which one?
Both of them? Okay, Zine calls both. Both of them? Okay, Zine calls both of them?
And lastly, item thirty is an item for which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, item thirty is before us. Mr. Parks?
Thirty for, special for Mr. Rosenthal.
All right, so that brings us back, Mr. Clerk, where?
Mr. President, that brings us back to items called special, general public comment or presentations.
Okay, at this time, we're going to have a presentation. Mr. Garcetti, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. And, Mr. Cardenas, if you would like to join us as well, we have a great delegation here of mayors that are here from Veracruz. Bienvenidos, estimados, invitados y delegados de mi estado de Veracruz, México. Welcome to our honorees, our great guests and delegates from the state of Veracruz, Mexico. We have the Three by One Economic Development Department of Cede Sol, el departamento de desarrollo social de Cede Sol y división del tres por uno, which was a program actually started in Zacatecas. I know Mr. Wezar is not here, but this collective delegation today, colleagues, we have seventeen mayors from throughout the state of Veracruz. And first and foremost, I'd like us all to join in welcoming them here to our council chambers this morning. Gracias por venir este día. And I want to thank the Federation of Veracruz for coordinating this. Gracias a la Federación Veracruzana por coordinar esta visita. This is a delegation of Mexican mayors, colleagues from the state of Veracruz, who are here with the Federation of Veracruz in Los Angeles. The state economic development department from Veracruz, which is within Cede Sol, the secretaria de desarrollo social, their coordinator is Angel Morales, who is very grateful for the years of support that has been provided to them. And they're here in Southern California to meet and greet with various elected officials from different cities and to share with them what they are doing in the state of Veracruz with their investments and development projects in Mexico. Besides meeting here, they're going to be with the Mexican consul, the mayor of Santa Ana, Miguel Pulido, and the city of Huntington Park. And these are funded as part of the Three by One Economic Development System that leverages expatriate investments within the municipal, state, and federal funds in Mexico for various economic development projects in Mexico. We have an incredible group that is here. The Veracruz economy is very similar to the majority of Mexican states in that the micro, small, and medium companies make up about seventy percent of operating businesses in the state. And this is very similar to Los Angeles, where small businesses also are the lifeblood of our local economy. Veracruz has three commercial marine ports, five marine ports. They move thirty percent of the shipments that are transported via ocean and thirty percent of the national cargo in the country, very similar to Los Angeles, where we have forty-three percent of all the goods that are transported via ocean here in our ports as well. They have a very diversified economy, but they're here to talk to us and to learn about that and also to express their good wishes to the city of Los Angeles, our common heritage. Tenemos una historia común, una historia profunda, y una historia que es la cuenta de toda nuestra gente. It's a story of all of our people here, both on both sides of a border that for many years did not exist as well. So we wanted to say welcome, bienvenidos a la ciudad de Los Angeles. And I wanted to ask my colleagues to say a couple of brief words as well, and we have a few certificates to present to our esteemed guests. Councilmember Reyes.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Garcetti. Bienvenidos a los alcaldes de Veracruz. Colleagues and those that are listening, Mexico is a rich, rich country. Every region has unique microclimates, unique culture, food, song, and today we're blessed to have seventeen mayors from Veracruz. And it shows the incredible economic relationship that Los Angeles has to this great country. Most folks see the, I guess, the negative side when you look at the violence along the border and the border towns and the crisis that's there. But throughout Mexico, you have tremendous energy and economic development opportunity. And I'm glad they're here today to demonstrate that relationship that reinforces the uniqueness of Los Angeles. L.A. is made up of so many different populations, but of Mexicanos, it's a large, large population, second largest other than Mexico City. And there you have an amazing array of this beautiful culture. So, bienvenidos, muchas gracias, pasando aquí con nosotros, pasando este día, ojalá que puedan disfrutar de Los Angeles y regresar con un ánimo, un sentido de hermandad y tener la capacidad de sostener la relación en el futuro. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. Lástima que no tenemos el único mexicano que tenemos aquí en el Consilio de Los Angeles que no está hoy, José Wezar. José Wezar es el único persona de miembros de este consilio que es nacido en otro país. Él es de Zacatecas, México. Pero me da mucho gusto decir que y mucho orgullo de decir que mis padres son de Jalisco, México, y yo soy primera generación americano. Pero tengo mucho orgullo de decir que tengo sangre de México y muchas personas aquí en Los Angeles tienen esa misma historia. I just wanted to say that it's unfortunate that our only Mexican-born council member, our only foreign-born council member, isn't here today, and that's José Wezar. He was actually born in Zacatecas, México. Obviously, he is now a citizen and a very, very proud member of this council. I'm also very proud to say that I'm a first-generation American-born citizen, but very, very proud to say that both of my parents are from Jalisco, México, and they came here for a greater opportunity. Yet at the same time, I always remember that when my mother and father would take us back to Mexico, it really was a great opportunity for us to visit our roots and to appreciate many of the values that we have as Mexicans in our roots. I think it's important for us to understand that here in Los Angeles, it is not an opportunity to spend time, but an opportunity to invest time, to welcome people when they come to our great city from other countries. And I just wanted to say thank you to the delegation from the state of Veracruz, México, for coming to our great city. I hope they enjoy themselves here as well. And I'm sure that there will be much to speak of and much dialogue and also many fruits of this dialogue in more trade and more opportunities for American workers and also Mexican workers as well. So with that, queremos invitar el delegación de Veracruz para que pueden recibir unos certificados de nuestro concejal, Garrett Garcetti. Thank you. Gracias. Thank you very much, Councilmember. Queremos invitar la delegación ahora, licencia Abel, Ignacio Cuevas Melo, and the entire delegation. We have three certificates and the Federación de Veracruz también. We'd like to welcome you to the city of Los Angeles. As you can see, our history, we share Spanish Mexican flag on both sides of the border in our own city symbol. El símbolo de la ciudad, tenemos las banderas de nuestra historia, las banderas de España, de México, de California, y de los Estados Unidos. And all four of those flags that have been a part of our history are embedded in our city seal. So we want to give this certificate to you. Muchas gracias por su visión y su trabajo, y gracias a todos los miembros de la delegación y por la Federación de Veracruz también. Y Cede Sol, hay otros representantes? Por favor.
Ángel, uno es para ti.
Sí, la federación.
Vamos a recibir.
Cede Sol?
Cede Sol está en licencia.
Los dos, dos.
Gracias.
No, no se puede hacer. Gracias por venir. And a final round of applause for our great visitors. Un aplauso por favor.
Quiero entregarle, de Jico, Veracruz, el mejor café del mundo. Este es un vino que es digestivo. Mole.
Mole, chavalito.
Y otro vino que se llama Mora.
Excelente.
Los postales, los postales.
Mejor en el mundo, pero.
Jico, Jico y Cuatpec, con pueblos más diferentes.
No tiene etiqueta porque estamos ahora tratando de mover para la posible exportación.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we take the photo in the area. What do you want, Tom? We're gonna do a thing in the back.
Mr. Laban, you're directing traffic?
We'll do it in the back.
No, mi placer. Gracias, mucho gusto. Es mi placer. Gracias.
Le voy a enviar más, eh?
Lo mejor.
Sí.
Del mundo, sí. Muchas gracias. Gracias. Igualmente, igualmente. A nuestro amistad.
All right, this is what we're gonna do. I'm gonna ask Mr. Parks in a minute to do, he has a presentation. But prior to that, I'd like to ask, Mr. Krikorian, we have items twenty-three through twenty-six that are closed session items. It is my understanding that we have, I think, one card on item twenty-three, Mr. Clerk?
That is correct, sir.
So what would your pleasure be on items twenty-four through twenty-six?
Mr. President, actually, items number twenty-three through twenty-six can all be dealt with in open session. These were all matters that were heard in the Budget and Finance Committee unless colleagues have a question or concern that they'd like to discuss in closed session with the city attorney's office. We can approve these settlements, settlement recommendations in open session.
Okay, then, with that said, we'll do our presentation, and then we will come back. Mr. Clerk, oh, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that being said, did you want to handle items twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six right now?
Okay, well, if we can do it right now, there's no one in the queue.
For item twenty-four, in the case entitled Terry L. Harper versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars in settlement.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Next?
In item twenty-five, in the case entitled Harold Noctree versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend four-hundred thousand dollars in settlement.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
And item twenty-six, in the case entitled Elkus versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in settlement.
On that item, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, with that said, Mr. Parks and Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And it gives me great honor to invite Ralph Kirschbaum to join us at the podium for today's presentation. Mr. Kirschbaum is the holder of the Gregor Piatagorski Chair in Violin Cello, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. At the University of Southern California Thornton School of Music and the artistic director of the festival. The University of Southern California's Thornton School of Music and the Los Angeles Philharmonic in partnership with the Colburn School and the Los Angeles Chamber Orchestra will be presenting the inaugural Piatagorski International Cello Festival from March ninth, 2012 through March eighteenth, 2012. Now, this festival is named in honor of Gregor Piatagorski, who is considered to be one of the greatest musicians of all time and who heralded a period of incredible vibrancy in the cultural life of Los Angeles when he settled in the city for the final years of his legendary international career, teaching at USC until his death in nineteen seventy-six. Widely acclaimed cellist Ralph Kirschbaum, the holder of the Gregor Piatagorski Chair in Violin Cello at the USC Thornton School of Music, will serve as artistic director of the festival. The festival will bring together masters of the cello and young cellists from all over the world to Los Angeles for a unique ten-day celebration of the cello, its music, and its musicians, including orchestral concerts, chamber music performances, master classes, and interactive events. The festival's roster includes the world's most celebrated cellists, Thomas Dominga, Lynn Harold, Franz Helmersen, Gary Hoffman, Stephen Isserlis, Ralph Kirschbaum, of course, Ronald Leonard, Lawrence Lesser, Misha Maysky, Miklos Perenje, Jian Wang, and Alisa Wellerstein, among others. Classical USC ninety-one point five FM, the largest nonprofit classical music station in the country, will broadcast live performances from the festival. The orchestra, directed by conductor Hugh Wolfe and comprised of members of the Los Angeles Chamber Orchestra, including concert master Margaret Batchery and top students from the USC School Thornton of Music and the Colburn School, will perform at the festival's opening concert at Bovard Auditorium on March the ninth. The Piatagorski International Cello Festival will welcome students from Europe, Japan, China, Australia, Africa, and South America, who will join young cellists from American universities and conservatories, including fourteen students from Los Angeles-area schools for master classes and performances throughout the festival. Six of Piatagorski's former students, Terry King, Lawrence Lesser, Misha Maysky, Jeffrey Solo, Nathaniel Rosson, Rosen, and Rafael Wallfish, along with his grandson Evan Drackman, will be appearing on March sixteenth at Zipper Hall to celebrate his life and career through film and discussion. So today, with the adoption of the resolution of the city of Los Angeles, along with the mayor, city attorney, city controller, and all Angelinos, we enthusiastically celebrate and support the convergence of experience and excellence offered at the inaugural Piatagorski International Cello Festival. And also in recognition of this world-class event, the Los Angeles City Council, along with the mayor, declare the period of March nine, 2012 through March eighteen, 2012, as the Piatagorski International Cello Festival Week in the city of Los Angeles.
I would just like to add and tell Ralph, thank you for the Thornton School of Music, for what you do in bringing young people on campus to participate in your programming and also to expose the community around the campus to this great experience and festival. So thank you very much.
Sixty years ago, Los Angeles, as part of its great cultural heritage, was a mecca for great classical musicians. Igor Stravinsky, the great composer, moved to Los Angeles. Yasha Heifetz, the great violinist, William Primrose, the great violist, and amongst those musicians, Gregor Piatagorski. Gregor Piatagorski was a great artist, of course, but much more than that, he was a wise, perceptive, warm, and generous human being. He felt passionately that music is as essential to life as the air we breathe. He implored his students to embrace the bond that comes from work, dedication, and the pursuit of beauty as a timeless measure of life. One recurring Piatagorski theme espoused the privilege of being a good servant of music. The twenty-two international artists and the forty-five young artists representing every continent except Antarctica who will be gathered here in Los Angeles are just that, good servants of music, leading thousands of music lovers through an exciting, challenging, and inspiring ten days ahead. Four major orchestral concerts, beginning, as the proclamation reads, this Friday, March the ninth, at Bovard Auditorium with our festival orchestra, and three performances with the Los Angeles Philharmonic in the following week. Nine recitals, fourteen master classes, workshops, and exhibits. The city will literally resound with the mellifluous strains of the cello, not least when one-hundred-and-ten cellists come together on the stage of Walt Disney Concert Hall Sunday, March eighteenth, to close the festival. I would like personally and on behalf of the presenters of the Piatagorski International Cello Festival, the USC Thornton School of Music, the L.A. Phil, together with our partners, the Colburn School and the Los Angeles Chamber Orchestra, to thank council members Parks and Perry, and indeed the entire city council, for endorsing and supporting the aims of this new, far-reaching international festival through your generous proclamation. Music and the arts bring a richness and a creative perspective to life, indeed a balm to the soul. As Piatagorski said, "An element as essential to life as the air we breathe." This festival and your warm endorsement of it invites all Angelinos to breathe of that air and to join in this joyful celebration of music. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Just as a point of information, the council will not meet on Friday, so one So one of the reasons why you're seeing so many presentations today is because we do not have a meeting on Friday. When we finish this next presentation, and then we have one item, after that one item, we will begin our public comment. But I wanted people to know that this is a unique situation, and we won't be meeting, in fact, until next Friday. So with that, I'd like to call forth Bill Rosendahl for today's final presentation.
Good morning, Mr. President, and good morning, colleagues. Thank you for prefacing it with this day being Wednesday. Steve Simon, come on up, and everybody associated with Steve, and folks come up who are part of the National Native Americans HIV/AIDS Awareness Day proclamation. Everybody come on around who's part of the group. We're doing two at the same time, and you'll see the synergy and the reason why this makes a lot of sense. Standing right here is Steve Simon. We've all gotten to know Steve Simon over the years when it comes to HIV. He has fought tirelessly to try and stop the epidemic here in the City of Los Angeles. As you know, when AIDS hit in the 80s and we began to realize what it was, we, the City of Los Angeles, got immediately engaged in it to deal with folks who were HIV, and also a tremendous amount of energy put into prevention. Forty-five thousand people in the City of Los Angeles have been diagnosed with HIV and AIDS since the beginning of the epidemic, and unfortunately has taken the lives of 19,159 men, women, and children in the city. Some of you know personally I lost my first partner, Christopher Lee Blaueman, from the AIDS epidemic. He's a young man, just 38 years old when he passed. And Stephen has served as the AIDS Coordinator for the City of Los Angeles for the last eight years. He has been responsible for the implementation and oversight of the city's AIDS policy, advising the mayor and city council on HIV/AIDS issues and developing city initiatives. He developed the city's HIV testing initiative, which aimed to highlight the importance of HIV testing and treatment, to increase awareness of HIV among Angelinos, and to lower the stigma associated with getting an HIV test. Under Stephen's leadership, the AIDS Coordinator's Office funded cutting-edge policy and prevention research to discover ways of improving and developing services, testing new technologies, and looking at new ways to target specific populations impacted by HIV and AIDS. Stephen has a long history of helping those living with HIV, from his time as Associate Director of Government Affairs for AIDS Project Los Angeles, in his instrumental role in the founding of HIV and AIDS Legal Service Alliance. Stephen is here today because he's leaving the city and moving on to the next chapter of his life. And we would like him to share the news of what he's up to and where he's going with his life. And let me just go right into the second before he speaks and before I give the certificate out. And this has to do with the National Native Americans HIV/AIDS Awareness Day proclamation. And Stephen suggested that we tie it together because the National Native American Awareness Day happens to be the 20th of this month. So the man who's been fighting hard about AIDS here in the city and also bringing in the whole issue of HIV among the Native American population as a whole, particularly among Native Americans gay or two-spirit individuals, which is a phrase used. Mr. Garcetti, come on up, because you've been a real leader on this in years past and presently as well. The Red Circle Project at HIV/AIDS Project Los Angeles is currently the only HIV prevention program in Los Angeles that provides specific services to Native American gay and two-spirit men and transgender women. Red Circle mobilizes a vibrant core group of community advocates of Native gay and two-spirited men and Native transgender women through group and community level of interventions to counter social isolation and facilitate outreach to additional members of the community. On March 20, 2012, we will be commemorating the sixth annual National Native HIV/AIDS Awareness Day. And we will also hear a few words from Elton Naswood from the Red Circle Project of APLA. Where are you? I just want to make sure you're there. Good, you're right next to me. We were here together yesterday. I'd like to turn it over before Steve gets his plaque and the American native speaks about it to Eric Garcetti. Many of you know, I've been on the council now, I guess, seven years. I can't believe it. I know. But before I got elected and many years in the process, you've been a true leader, Eric, and we really appreciate your leadership on it. Please say a few words.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Councilmember Rosendahl. Thank you, Bill, for your friendship. Thank you for, it's a phrase we throw around a lot when we say, "Thank you for your leadership." You embody leadership. You don't just talk about it and do things. But you being here as an openly gay council member was a very important moment in our city's history, and the way that you have embodied the kind of love and the spirit who you are of taking people around this world and bringing them together, I couldn't think of a better person to be doing this presentation. For somebody else who's been a real light in this city, and I want to thank Stephen Simon, who has just been a joy to be, to call a colleague, to call a friend, somebody who has made sure that so many of those issues, you know, there's almost like a bell curve when people look at an issue like AIDS and like, it's the hottest thing in the world, everybody's dealing with it, and then people's interest just wanes over time. But that doesn't mean the problem has waned. In many ways, the problem stays with us, and it manifests, and even though people can live now full lives HIV-positive and with AIDS, our need as a city to never stop caring for and preventing the spread of AIDS, you have done a remarkable job. And you haven't just been a local leader, you have been a national leader. It is a huge loss for the city, but you have always brought up people with you, and I know that we have an amazing infrastructure that you leave behind. But I just want to thank you on a personal level, whether it was getting council members to lead the way by taking HIV tests here. You would actually take swabs from us and show people just how easy it was, about making sure that there wasn't a single community that was left untouched by the work that we are doing, or making sure that we really look in the most robust way, not just the intervention afterwards, but the prevention at the front end. You have inspired us, and I know that you're going to continue to do great things as a leader in this country for many years to come. So thank you, and we will miss you, but I know you will not be far away. And thank you, Bill, for including today this incredible presentation for our two-spirited individuals who are Native American and gay, lesbian, transgender, bisexual. As we look at all communities, there are LGBT folks in every community and vice versa. Every community is full of LGBT individuals as well. And when we look at that and make sure no voice is left, I remember when we did the Gay and Lesbian Elder Housing in Hollywood, these are folks that were poor, gay, and elderly. Triple discrimination. They could maybe find a place to live, but they couldn't afford it. Or they found a place that they could afford and live, the folks there weren't gay, and they faced discrimination. In the Native American community, too, the more we give voice to this, and I'm sure we'll hear it in a second, the more we make sure that nobody is forgotten, and there are no better storytellers than those who were here originally, and we look forward to them telling their true stories today as well. So thank you, Bill, and thank you, Steve, for everything that you've done.
Well, thank you very much, Eric. You're a true leader of our city, and I look forward to you becoming a leader in many other ways throughout our great city and our nation and our world. Steve, you've saved lives. You have saved lives with the awareness, and those who have been and are HIV, you've kept them going. You can't do more in life than saving lives and helping other people. And on that regard, here you go, babe, signed, you know, by everybody within the city that outlines some of the things you've done, but it can never capture the real spirit of you, Steve. Congratulations.
And now the honorable Steve Simon.
No, Mr. Rosendahl, now the honorable Tom Labange.
Hey, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Garcetti, Regina Houston-Sway, and the great General Manager of the Department of Disability, give her a hand, okay, which is so important, Regina. And what's so important about Steve is he got an opportunity to do not just a good job, a great job. He got an opportunity to serve all people. He got an opportunity to be a voice. He never was afraid of anything, of any challenge. He kept coming forward with ideas and concepts to bring people together, to fight, to do the role of what his job was as far as fighting AIDS and HIV. I love you, Stephen, for what you did as a passionate city employee. This type of individual has a passionate general manager and other employees in the department who always fought for it. Betty Wilson came back from retirement. Give Betty Wilson a hand, because she did that, Betty. Commissioner, good to see you. I can mention everybody, but I just want to talk about Steve now. The great thing is, if a coach gives you a ball and says, "You run down that field and score," you ran and you scored every time. And if you got knocked down, you got back up, got in a huddle, and you called another play, and you continue to score for the issues that you fought for. I'm an admirer of your work, and everyone who works for this city should have a little Steve Simon in them. Congratulations, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Okay, Mr. Koretsch, you have the ball, and maybe you can score for Mr. Labange.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. And this issue means a lot to me, as Steve knows, because I had the chance to be active in this issue since I helped to found the city that ultimately was the most impacted, probably in the entire country, by HIV and AIDS. And I personally have known sadly, literally, hundreds of people that have died of AIDS and many others that have lived for a lengthy period of time as a result of the progress we've made. There are few people that have done more on this critical issue than Steve, both here with the city and before, and continue to do great things on this issue. I mean, this means a lot for the quality of life and literally saving the lives of countless people. I appreciate all your efforts in this arena. It means, it means a lot to me, and it means so much to the thousands of people that you've impacted. I'm just sorry that you're leaving, but you've done an amazing job, and just wanted to acknowledge your great work.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill, you bring in a legend in the City of Los Angeles who's worked diligently, Eric, to make a difference, to make a change. And when you look at opportunities, when you look at equal opportunities for all, and a city that cares about people, you reflect that. And I heard yesterday in committee that you were leaving. I heard in committee yesterday that they're now searching to find someone to fill your shoes. Prior to that, I didn't even know that you were seeking other employment, but you've done extremely well here. You've carried the banner proudly. We've listened to you, you've made changes, and the folks behind you obviously reflect the support for you and what you've done. So I want to congratulate you. I wish you well, and you know we're only a phone call away if you need us for anything. But you've definitely made a difference in the City of the Angels, and you are an angel, as Tom Labange always says, "an angel in the City of Angels." So best wishes to you, my friend. Congratulations.
Mr. Reyes.
I just do want to rise, thank you, Steve, for all your hard work, seen you perform in many of different committee issues, advocating here before the council, and you spoke from the heart, and you understood the need for how we treat each other as human beings. And for that, I thank you, especially during the crisis of Las Mamoleas Wall over Lincoln Park and what happened in the East Side, and just the tension between those who confuse public health with religious beliefs and, for some reason, ignore the need to address the individual for being a person, a human being, a creation from God. And how can you ignore that? It just boggles the mind. And you stood up strong, and we kept going, and we do have a program there. And regardless of what language you speak, what culture you come from, or how poor or rich you are, you still need to have the ability to treat each other as human beings, and that's what you've demonstrated, and for that, I thank you. Thank you, Steve.
Brother Simon.
I've spoken before this body several times, and I've never been nervous about it, but I'm shaking here because of these kind words. Thank you, of course, Bill, and Eric in particular. It's emotional for me. I am the fifth AIDS Coordinator since Mayor Bradley created this position. I'm one of the three surviving AIDS Coordinators, because we lost the other two to the epidemic. And that's part and parcel of the city's dedication to fighting HIV. This city, where HIV was discovered 30 years ago, is where we enacted the world's first HIV and AIDS anti-discrimination law in housing and employment. We have always been at the forefront of this epidemic, so it's always been a matter of pride that I've been able to be a part of that. We've moved on to a lot of public policy work and prevention work, as you've heard about. Our cornerstone of that was the tough political decision that this council made, or earlier iterations of it, and that you continue to support, in that we, this city was one of the first in the country to fund, support, and coordinate syringe exchange that has changed the face of the epidemic and kept our epidemic from becoming like it is in New York and Washington, D.C. It's been a tough political challenge, but we stood by that and made sure not only did we avert thousands of HIV and hepatitis C infections, but we got people into care, into treatment, into drug treatment, and we removed more than a million dirty needles from the streets of Los Angeles each year, okay?
Great, 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 great.
That's the kind of tough political decisions that you all have made here. It's my hope that we do fill this position and continue this legacy as quickly as possible with someone who knows the community, knows the city, and has true expertise in doing HIV and AIDS work. It's my hope that we stand behind the Department, Department of Disability, where we've not only been housed for the last decade, but we've been truly partners in making sure that people with HIV and AIDS have access to the services and programs they need and the broader disability community as well. So thank you again for your ongoing support there. Bottom line, our legacy needs to be maintained. You all, this council, has done more work than most people in this country to save those lives, and the people standing behind you, the staff members that have always, always bent over backwards to support our program, to make sure we're able to do the work we do, I thank you all from the bottom of my heart. I don't think you're recognized enough in that. And again, thank you so much for recognizing us today and supporting the epidemic.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Mr. Rosendahl. Before you present him that proclamation, it's my understanding that this is item 30, so why don't we vote on this as Mr. Rosendahl is presenting you with your proclamation? Mr. Clerk, item 30. In fact, Mr. Rosendahl, I'm gonna have you direct the clerk, open and close. Okay, Mr. Clerk at Mr. Rosendahl's direction.
Yes, open the rolls, close the rolls, and tabulate the votes.
Fourteen eyes.
All right, now let me just go to the National Native American AIDS Awareness. Fourth with on that, of course. Come on up, my man. As you heard me talk about, the tie-in happens to be with AIDS Awareness, which is March 20, and it is the 6th. And Elton Naswood from the Red Circle Project of APLA will accept it and explain what the Red Circle Project is too. And this is your cert, and everyone standing behind you that's involved with this, it's also part of it. Go ahead, speak first, and then we'll do the second.
Thank you, Councilmember. What I said is, good morning. My name is Elton Naswood. I am of the near-to-the-water people, born for the edge-water people. My maternal grandfather's clans is the Mexican people, and my paternal grandfather's clans is the Tango people. This is how I am Navajo. I was taught at a very young age to introduce myself in that way when I am speaking amongst a group of people. First of all, to identify myself to the Creator, and secondly, to other people who may be in the room, and thirdly, most importantly, other Native Americans who are in the room to identify my heritage. Before I continue, I also want to acknowledge the Gaberlin Otangva, who are the original inhabitants of this land, because Los Angeles, the City of Los Angeles, was the land of the Gaberlin Otangva, so I want to honor them in that way. I'm very thankful that this special day is being recognized by the City of Los Angeles, because the City of Los Angeles is, has one of the highest urban Indian population in the country, meaning that we have a population of Native, Native people who live in the City of Los Angeles, and this particular disease is affecting our community at an extent, at an enormous rate. I'm very fortunate, and I want to say also congratulations and thank you to Stephen Simon, because if it weren't for the AIDS Coordinator's Office in the City of because if it weren't for the AIDS Coordinator's Office in the city of Los Angeles, our program may not have been in existence. We are one of the few programs that have been funded by this program, and we are very fortunate enough to provide the services that we do. Stephen, you have been a great ally, advocate, both locally and nationally, for our Native American community, and I want to honor and say thank you with that. And I also want to say thank you to the city council for allowing me to speak and for proclaiming March 20th as National Native American AIDS Awareness Day in the city of Los Angeles. The Red Circle Project is the only HIV prevention program in the city of Los Angeles and the county of Los Angeles. And I, and myself, and I want to acknowledge my staff, Michelle Enfield, are only two people who provide these services to our community, which is, can be extraordinary, which can be an extraordinary challenge, but we're able to provide the information to our community. We have the heart and passion to do this work, because if our people are affected by this disease, we are not only losing a family member, a tribal member, a culture, a language, we're losing a whole people, which we will never be able to bring back. So this HIV/AIDS awareness and prevention is critically important to our community, and so the work that we do and the support that we receive, not only by the city, the county, as also, as well as the AIDS Coordinator's Office, is very important. We also want to welcome everyone to a community event that we are holding on March 17th in the city of West Hollywood. It's the Celebration of Life Powwow. This is the second of, second year we've had this community event. It's an extraordinary event where we're able to bring our community together, provide HIV testing, as well as provide a cultural context for our community to gather with singing and dancing. So I'm very honored that we're allowed this time and this opportunity, and say thank you again to everyone in the room for your continued support for our program, as well as for our community. Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Thank you very much. Like I mentioned to the crowd, we have one item. We have an assemblyman that's visiting with us who's engaged in this item, and he's got to leave to catch a plane. Mr. Englander, I do want to be sensitive to all of the people that have been here, and I guess to Mr. Zine too, but all of the people that have been here since nine o'clock waiting to speak, and I want to make sure we do that as quickly as possible. So, Mr. Clerk, we're gonna go to Mr. Englander for item, uh...
14.
14, and if we could have the, our assemblyman come forward and sit at the center table. There he is. Welcome, my friend. Go on, Mitchell.
Councilmembers, and thank you, Mr. President. I've been actually working on this before I took office. This is an item that I've been working on for almost nine years. I've partnered with Councilman Zine and Assemblyman Bob Blumenfeld on this as well. My former boss, my predecessor, Councilman Greg Smith, worked on this as well diligently, and this is a big issue that affects all of our communities, mobile billboard advertising displays. Now, that's the official name. It used to be trailers, unhitched trailers, and called all different types of things. The city's new ordinance, which was enabled by Assemblymember Bob Blumenfeld, AB 1298, will now prohibit mobile billboard advertising displays completely. This is whether they are standing alone or attached to a motor vehicle on any Los Angeles city street, provided they get a 24-hour advance warning citation issued for a first-time offender. We will finally be able to impound this blight. I'd also like to thank City Attorney Michael Nagel, who we'll call up shortly, for his hard work in strengthening the city ordinance. Michael and I have been working very closely on this to tighten the language and give local authorities, municipalities, the control, and working with the state to enact this legislation. So again, a special thank you to our Assemblyman Bob Blumenfeld for championing this cause at the state level and clearing a path so that the city of Los Angeles can create the tools for sensible, narrowly tailored regulations that address this as a public and traffic safety issue. Mobile billboard advertising displays are a visual blight. They pose significant safety hazard for motorists, pedestrians, cyclists, and handicapped people, and they reduce available on-street parking and impair the visibility of drivers. In order to address this proliferation of this type of graffiti and blight, last year the California Legislature adopted Blumenfeld's AB 2756, giving local authorities the ability to regulate advertising on non-motorized vehicles. I've got a quick slideshow. I want to show you some of the examples of these photos that have been taken throughout the entire city of Los Angeles. Unfortunately, mobile billboard operators looked for and found loopholes in the law and begin attaching billboards to sleds, bicycles, inoperable vehicles, scooters, and worst of all, cars with handicap placards. They also began moving billboards a few inches at a time to avoid citation and impoundment. In order to address these loopholes, the California Legislature recently adopted AB 1298 by Assemblyman Bob Blumenfeld once again, which amends the definition of mobile billboard advertising displays and regulates advertising signs on motor vehicles parked or left standing upon a public street in our communities. This legislation also provides specific authority for local jurisdictions to enact ordinances established that a minimum distance of vehicle must be moved after 72 hours. This would allow the city to establish a reasonable distance that a vehicle parked on a street must be moved to help curb the problem of long-term vehicle storage on our roadways. These often, particularly in windy parts of the city, blow over and block sidewalks, so cyclists and pedestrians, particularly those in wheelchairs, cannot pass, and they blow into the streets. I've also got a quick video that we wanted to go ahead and show you so we can make it officially part of the record as well. If we can go ahead and cue the video.
You see them, you see them everywhere. We're talking about those mobile ads. You tell us they're bugging you. Eyewitness News reporter Carlos Grande shows us what the city is doing to try to get rid of them.
These mobile ads are popping up all over the place again.
You see them, you see them everywhere. We're talking about those mobile ads. You see them everywhere. We're talking about those mobile ads.
These mobile ads are popping up all over the place again. They're very visible, which is the whole point, and to some, it's very annoying.
This guy won't move it.
We've told you about them before. They're placed in a parking space and sometimes aren't moved for days. Some city of Los Angeles officials are trying to get rid of them. We received an email from one business owner who was bugged about this particular billboard attached to a van.
And we have this parked in front of our business every day. We even have people walking in the store asking for a massage.
Which is fine, but Dennis Hagerty and Jeff Falgene own a piano store, so it doesn't really help their business much. Falgene says what's hit a sour note with him is the handicap plate on the van. It allows the van to park here all day, even when the street signs say one hour parking.
The laws are set up so that that license plate allows, you know, a, you can't touch them. To take it to this level where they're taking advantage of a system that's supposed to facilitate and help those that actually have a handicap, that, that's not so good.
We went to the business and found another huge mobile billboard outside. It was hooked to a car which had a handicap tag, and we asked if the owner was here.
He's not here at the moment.
The owner hasn't called me back, but his attorney did. She wanted to...
Okay. All right, thank you for that. You get the point of that. I mean, the worst thing we could possibly do is allow them with handicap placards as well. It's really a crying shame that they would allow this. So with this, Assemblyman Bob Blumenfeld has joined us, all the way from Sacramento and from the San Fernando Valley. We truly appreciate the partnership and your leadership on this as well. My only question to you on this, and whatever you wanted to share as well, is with all the problems going on in Sacramento, and I'm sure, I know you've got your hands full, this has been a cornerstone of something you've been focused on. I wanted to know why you've been so focused on this and what you're hearing from your constituents on this as well, and I really appreciate your leadership.
Thank you very much, Councilman Englander. And President Wesson, thank you very much for your indulgence in taking this, this issue out of order, and I will try to be brief in accordingly, accordingly, and in respect to the folks who have been here. I really appreciate the partnership I've had with, with all of you here on dealing with this issue, this issue of what I call road spam, because that's what we're really talking about. It's the kind of advertisement that you see popping up on your computer screen is actually popping up in the streets, and it's manifesting in its physical form, taking up parking spaces, creating dangerous situations, and basically creating blight in our community. You're right. How is it that I, that I spend time on this issue when I chaired the Budget Committee and 99% of my time is spent trying to, for, for job creation and trying to balance our budget? But this is one of those issues that is a quality-of-life issue. Out of all the issues I've dealt with in, in the State Assembly, the issue I've gotten more constituent mail on and more, more calls and concerns is this issue compared to everything else combined. And you, you think about that, and have dealt with a lot of weighty issues on the state level, it's pretty amazing, because this hits people right where they live. These signs get parked in front of their homes, in front of their businesses. We saw the, the example of one in front of a piano store. I've talked to folks at a hardware store, and they were losing business because nobody could park in front of their store, because they, these parking spots were, were being hogged by this visual blight. I really appreciate also the city attorney's work. We've worked very closely with them on this, and really, all of the city council partners, particularly the Valley partners, Mr. Englander especially bringing this motion up, but, but all of you, Mr. Zine, and everyone else who's been here who's been helpful throughout the years. And this has been a year, years-long process. As was mentioned, we started this out, first, when I got to the legislature, I was concerned about this issue and tried to research, why, why do we have these signs? And found out the city had been trying, but because of a, of a quirk in the state vehicle code, we had to treat these unhitched vehicles the same as any other vehicle. So we went out and we changed that law, and Mr. Corrigan was in the Assembly at the time, was able to vote for that one. And we were able to, to change it so those unhitched trailers could be treated like the road spam that they are and could be regulated by the city. And you guys were great. You passed an ordinance, and we wiped out hundreds of these things immediately following the passage of that law. And in the San Fernando Valley especially, but throughout the city, there was a sigh of relief after that happened. But what began to happen is the, the blight merchants, is what I call them, folks who are intent on blighting our city and profiting from that, not people who are paying for a bus bench or a legitimate sign, they're trying to find loopholes, and they started attaching them to bicycles, into scooters, into other types of devices. So we went back, worked with the city attorney and said, "Well, how do we close this up? Make it, you know, put a belt and suspenders on it, make it absolutely clear that the city has the power to regulate this." And we put a very aggressive bill through, got it passed and signed into law, bipartisan in Sacramento, and this new law gives you quite a lot of authority to deal with these things, and you're taking that up in this very good ordinance, which I really, my main purpose in coming here is to commend you all for this ordinance, to let you know that I stand with you, that the state of California stands with you, that we're proud of you for doing this, and Mr. Englander for bringing this forward, and that we will, we will make our quality of life in the San Fernando Valley and throughout the Los Angeles area the best that we can, and this ordinance will go a long way toward that by helping rid us of this visual blight. Thank you.
Thank you, Assemblyman. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bob, good morning. Nice to see you here in chambers. This problem has been growing over the years. As we know, we started enforcement work with our city attorney, Department of Transportation. We thought we had it under control. Lo and behold, all of a sudden, it continues to explode. I know in my district, we have our community posse, went out there first the year last year, did a big sweep. It was great. Got them taken care of. I mean, they're so bold, I know that they put them in your neighborhood personally to offend you. So the individuals behind us are causing great irritation to the community. I know Carlos Demescol from Channel 7, who's here in chambers, Channel 7 did more than one story about this because of the outrage of the community. There are some districts where there's an overconcentration. There's other districts, there's a few, and I don't think you'll find too many in the third district, because we're very aggressive with removing them. But I want to commend you for carrying this legislation, my colleague Mitch Englander and Greg Smith, because it seems that the San Fernando Valley has been plagued with this for a long, long time, and you have basically taken every loophole out of the equation to tighten it, and we are going to work with the Department of Transportation, who's here, and if I can get them to come forward along with the city attorney to the table, please, because our plan is to continue impounding, continue the enforcement, and rid this once and for all. And every time we go right, they go left. What we need to do is be consistent with it. So the city attorney's office, that copied the ordinance based upon which you were able to successfully pass with the Governor's Security and Sacramento and DOT, which will be the main enforcement, along with our community members who will be reporting it. And I want to commend you for what you've done, the state legislature. I don't think you had any no votes on this, am I correct?
You're correct.
So that's unusual, when you get the, the partisan politics in Sacramento to agree on something, because it's spread and it continues to spread. So with that, if we can hear from the city attorney's office, the Department of Transportation, and I want to inform the community members to notify DOT when they see this. DOT will respond to it, and if they don't respond, contact the local council office. It's not citywide, but it's in certain parts of the city, and it continues to spread. So we want to eradicate, not just control, our goal is to eradicate it from the streets of Los Angeles. Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, I, I want to mention that City Attorney Trutanich, this is a huge issue for him, and he has fought hard to make sure that all of these things go forward. And also, I'd like to thank Carlos Grande from KABC, who made my job significantly easier in drafting this ordinance.
That's Eyewitness News, number one news station in Southern California.
And also, in reviewing that tape last night again, and seeing it here today, I would like the council, if they would, are willing to do it, to make one more finding, and it will read as follows. Temporary signs affixed to motor vehicles pose a significant public safety risk, particularly when the vehicle is involved in a collision or is parked or driven during high-wind conditions. They basically become missiles. They will break up. If you saw the report, you saw those huge signs attached to motor vehicles. Imagine what happens when somebody collides with that. There are blind spots, there are over the windows. It's a disaster in the making.
So we want to add that to the ordinance?
We want to add, I'll continue as to what it should say. Therefore, permanently affixed signs for purposes of enforcement under this ordinance means that signs must be painted directly on the body of the vehicle or decalbed on the body of the vehicle, or placed in a location on the body of the vehicle that was specifically built by a registered manufacturer in accordance and compliance with both federal and safety guidelines, state guidelines, for the express purpose of containing an advertising sign.
Motion by Mr. Englander, seconded by Mr. Zine.
And I will provide this to the city clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
We will, can we hear from Department of Transportation?
Thank you.
Mr. Zine, thank you, councilmembers. We're just here to show the support for this ordinance, and our enforcement efforts are here, and then we're here to answer any questions you may have, but...
Thank you.
And one more, just one more quick thing.
Mr. Zine, you're over. Push your, push your button again.
One more, just one more sense, I'm done.
End it.
We are addressing the handicap problem with the handicap placards. We're working with the assembly member to eradicate that problem, so I just want to add that to it.
Also, we'll be introducing a resolution. Maria Sousa Rontree is working on it right now that will allow us to enforce under the Vehicle Code section on disabled placards. It's a resolution that, it's specifically 2265.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Mr. Kretz, then Mr. Corrigan. Come on, guys. Just bear with us. Mr. Kretz?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, my office received hundreds of complaints from every level and every type, everything from neighborhood councils and homeowners associations to private citizens and schools and businesses, and there's no way we could have done this without Mr. Blumenfeld's help, and I just wanted to offer my appreciation and to that of my colleagues, Councilmember Zine and Englander. This is a huge nuisance, just, not just aesthetically, but also in terms of public safety. And so I want to thank you all for having done what you've done, and I think, even though they've tried every trick in the book, whether it is to attach to vehicles, or bicycles, or sheep, or whatever trick there is, I think we have this all covered now, and I believe we can finally get rid of this hazard, particularly in the San Fernando Valley, but also throughout the city. So my thanks to everyone involved.
Thank you. Mr. Corrigan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, I think Assemblymember Blumenfeld is certainly correct that this is the source of so many of the complaints that each of us get about quality of life. But it's not just because of the mobile billboards and how offensive they are, it's very much because of the mobile billboard operators and how offensive they are, and the fact that at every turn, every effort that we've made, that Mr. Labange has made, that Mr. Zine has made, that Mr. Englander and his predecessor, Mr. Smith, has made, that Mr. Kretz and myself have made, at every turn, they try to find ways to weasel around the law and find continuing ways to offend people in the San Fernando Valley and elsewhere in Los Angeles. And I just need to say briefly, Assemblymember Blumenfeld, I think, has been modest today, but his leadership in Sacramento on this issue and his, his persistence in seeing it through has enabled us to get to this point, and it's been at personal risk of his own. These very same operators have parked their mobile billboards in front of his home with a... offensive, uh, disgusting messages personally directed at him. These same operators have, you know, confronted him and stalked him even in front of his children. And still, that, that has not only not swayed him from this path, it's emboldened him to continue to work. And I hope that it will continue to embolden all of us to ensure that once and for all we put a stop to this, this scourge of, of disgusting, blighting, uh, dangerous signs that continue to haunt the San Fernando Valley. So I want to thank Mr. Englander, Mr. Zine, all of our other colleagues who've worked so diligently on this issue. Hopefully we're at the end, and of course, our city attorney's office and our staff who've, uh, worked so hard as well. Hopefully we're finally at a finish line. Uh, and Assemblymember Blumenfield, thank you very much for being here today and for, for seeing us through to this point.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Just a quick comment, as you know, went through our committee, the transportation committee, uh, and we've been talking about this for quite a while. And what's so interesting, all of a sudden I'll be on my Sentinella Bundy and all of a sudden one of these will appear out of nowhere. They'll either, um, tie it to a meter or tie it to a car or, or the one I just saw a couple of days ago, it was a motorcycle connected to it and there it was in everybody's face. Free advertising in a dramatic way, but obviously a hazard and, and visual blight as well. You know, mobile billboards can be found in many locations throughout our city. They not only create visual blight and take valuable parking spaces, but they also pose a safety hazard by impairing pedestrian and driver visibility in our streets. Uh, I am confident that amending our municipal code, as we heard my colleague just mentioned there, conform to the new state legislation that closes the loophole in the California vehicle code will finally allow us to rid our streets of this dangerous blight. I want to thank Mitch Englander. You've really shown leadership. You've only been on the council a few months and you jump around with great leadership on so many different issues and I, I'm very proud of you for taking this. Uh, your, your predecessor, Greg Smith and I used to talk about it all the time and you're just, uh, already a legend in your own way, uh, moving forward with that. But Mr. Corrigan, you said it all too in that mix, but this is our opportunity. I want to ask the city attorney one more time, will this give us the ability now to stop this from happening?
State law, which gives us the ability to stop this from happening. And I want to mention that we have been successful in court. Uh, three years ago, I won at the Ninth Circuit, which allowed, it's now codified at, in the state vehicle code that we only have to issue warning citations. We no longer have to put up signs, which was always a key obstacle. The court also found that these, these people who are putting these out there, these ads have a uniquely low due process right to even do it. They found, we presented multiple evidence on this, the signs, they were appalled, the Ninth Circuit. And also two weeks ago, somebody in our business, Gerald Sato from our business in complex litigation, won in court regarding the, the, these things that were attached to bicycles. The court found even under our old ordinance that we could impound the bicycle, that the state intended to ban those. It wasn't a loophole really, it was just a perceived loophole on the behalf of the violators. We just wanted to make it more clear in, in Assemblymember Blumenfield's motion that no, the state intended to ban all of these things.
And so if I'm a person in my car and I see one of them there and I have my proper, uh, you know, hands on the wheel, but I got one of those things that I can talk to, can I get a police officer, who will come out and say, get rid of it now when you're going through traffic and you see it?
This is a criminal violation. It's a misdemeanor. It's no longer a parking fine. Uh, our office will be prosecuting these vigorously. And so yes, either a police officer or any peace officer under the penal code can cite and impound these vehicles after they've been given, if it's a first-time offender, the notice for 24 hours.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, you're over. Mr. Englander?
I'll be quick. I just want to close with a couple of things and just say.
No, Mr. Zine is after you. You want him to go first?
I'll let him go first. Go ahead, Mr. Zine.
And can we please?
I, I just want to say that this takes effect immediately. We don't have to wait till the first of the year. This is effective immediately, uh, which means once we approve it, the mayor signs it, it's law, we will launch another mission in the San Fernando Valley to rid them again. And we'll work with the 12th District, Mr. Englander's staff, my staff, with our posse, with DOT. We will once and, once and for all rid this. Bob, again, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Englander to close.
Yes, I want to close by just actually thanking a few people because this has been a tremendous amount of frustrating work. Uh, and as Mr. Corrigan mentioned, Bob Blumenfeld, our assembly member, was targeted on this and was working tenaciously on this, but so were so many others as well, including his staff, John Popeye, who's here, who's gone out to so many community events, to neighborhood councils, to build support, uh, as well as our city attorney, Michael Nagel, who has worked tirelessly on this. I think we've been working together on this for nine years.
Except we were in high school.
We were in high school together, uh, for a long time on this. And, uh, also to, to my staff, to Hannah Lee, my transportation deputy, who's been working tirelessly on this as well, to Assemblyman Corrigan, and I want to say Assemblymen, for his vote, he brought his vote not only to Sacramento, but here to the council floor as well and his support now as a council member. He's been working on this all the way from Sacramento and down here now locally. Uh, and to all my colleagues for their support on this. So a, a thank you to Assemblyman Bob Blumenfeld for your leadership on this. We truly, truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Wayne Spindler, Bruce Boyer, Liv Reyes, Sam Amari, please come forward, front and center. Okay, please identify yourself.
Well, good morning. I'm Bruce Boyer and I am the guy that you've spent the last 20 minutes or so vilifying, so here I am. And I'd like to speak on your proposed ordinance. What you all think you are going to do is to make the First Amendment illegal. I'd like to enlighten the city council. You don't have that authority. I know you'd like to. I know that you guys think you're a bunch of kings, but you're not. Our First Amendment says freedom of speech. That means if a guy wants to stick a sign on his pickup truck or his trailer and park it in front of Assemblyman Blumenfield's house and say, fire him because he's a fascist, that's called our First Amendment. Now, I know that Assemblyman Blumenfield would like to have me put in jail for doing that, and I've offered him a solution, stop being a fascist, but he doesn't want to go there. So what Mr. Nagleman, who I like as, and he's a very good deputy city attorney, kind of didn't mention is we have a court date. See, the first federal case, Mike didn't win it. It's still ongoing. Yeah, he's not on the case, so maybe he isn't up on it. The second federal court case, that's March 26th. Bruce's birthday for all of you too. And the city attorney is going to try to ask a federal judge to put aside the First Amendment, free speech of the Constitution, the Fifth Amendment that says you can take people's property without due process, because what none of these people mentioned is, when they send out the posse to seize those awful vehicles, when do we get a day in court? Oh, we don't. The Department of Transportation will determine who's a mobile billboard or the LAPD will. There's no due process.
Thank you, thank you. Wayne Spindler, after Wayne Spindler, I think it's Liv Reyes, please come forward.
Well, we just saw the entertaining features, but this really goes to the heart of the sidewalk and the maintenance issue in front of the homes. And I know that you want to make us responsible to repair the sidewalks and the trees, sell the parking in front of the homes and give it back to the homeowners. Now, if you do that, most of the streets in front of the residential neighborhoods would be private. Now, if they want to park these things in front of the houses and the owner says, I want a thousand dollars a month, then you could get it. And then that would eliminate the city because no longer it would be a public issue, it would be a private land use issue. But the problem is, is that the council is creating this monster with the signs really because of the same thing. On the one hand, you want to grab the tax money, but on the other hand, you don't want the liability. So you want to make us pay for the sidewalks when we go into escrow and you want us to pay to trim the city trees, but you don't want to give the homeowners that are going to be paying for this, the exclusive right to control this property. So this is like being a squatter. That, that's what you're making us. It's a, Jan Perry talked about something called economic apartheid. And that's what you're doing, especially in the San Fernando Valley. You drive up the streets and we're seeing again these signs tied to these, to these scooters. And I thought we were done with this. And now I see them popping up again and I find out that we're still litigating this. So let's kill three birds in one stone and give the homeowners exclusive control of the streets in front of their property and then we'll fix the sidewalks, we'll trim the trees and we'll collect the rent whenever these damn things show up. That's the way to do it. Thank you.
Okay, do we have a Liv Reyes, a Sam Amari? Please come forward. Both of you? Whoever's first, state your name.
Hi, my name is Liv Reyes. I just wanted to address everybody. I read this, uh, law pretty thoroughly. It seems that, uh, what's stipulated is that many people in this room are going to be affected by this, uh, simply because, uh, it seems that a bumper sticker is now legal. So if you're looking to represent yourself and the city doesn't like, uh, what you're, uh, claiming, if you're, if you're representing, uh, whatever faction you are, um, and you put a bumper sticker on your car, that's now a, not a permanent attachment and you're subject to getting your vehicle seized. Uh, in my opinion, that's, that's grossly illegal, but somehow this is getting passed into law. I'm not quite understanding this. Also, I don't quite understand how the last little bit was just signed in, uh, per the, uh, city attorney, how he just threw in the vehi, I'm sorry, the vans in there. Um, either way, it, it seems a little ridiculous to me that anybody in this room that has a bumper sticker on their car is now subject to this law because it's not permanently attached to their vehicle. And, uh, that's a little strange to me. So if you guys could think about that before passing the law, that'd be a deal.
Thank you. Next.
Sam Amari, sir, King Kong billboards. Sir, I've been doing, my family has been involved in mobile billboards for over 40 years. And our mobile billboards are not of any sort of blight or danger. I haven't had one accident with any of our signs. And we're not an issue for 40 years. And it's part of our business, it's our livelihood. We have hundreds of thousands of dollars invested in equipment and supply and our, our trailer signs are professionally manufactured. I do agree with you on signs that are not professional and are a hazard, but our signs were professional, never had an accident or anything illegal about them. Tell some people want to build their political career off harassing us and taking our civil rights away. And I didn't lose that lawsuit. We're re-suing the city on numerous issues. And, uh, there's nothing illegal about us putting a sign and advertising on a public street. It's our right and we've been doing it for 40 years, just like the city puts signs everywhere on the sidewalk, blocking the streets and making money. All it is is about money. You're not getting revenue from us advertising on the public street. Then you went forward and went against state law. State law said, as long, paragraph six of, of the state law stated that as long it's permanently attached to the van, it's not long, wider, higher of the van, it's legal. Now you went and put in the ordinance in at the last minute, which is totally illegal, goes against state law and we will file a lawsuit against that, that now it has to be painted directly onto the body of the vehicle. So that in itself right there is illegal. You are not king of this planet, you don't own the whole city and we'll fight it. I'm not going away. We'll paint it on the van. I'll paint it on a 25-foot box truck. I will not go nowhere. Believe me, I'll paint it and I will put it in Blumenfield's front door. You want me to paint it? Mr. Amari will paint it on that car and those signs will stay there.
Thank you, thank you. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Mr. President, for clarification, that was as amended, sir.
As amended. And Mr. Englander, uh, wants this to go forthwith. Okay, now we're going to go and do public comment. Instead of doing one minute, I'm going to give you two. I appreciate you waiting. This is just an unfortunate situation based on the fact that we will not be in session, uh, Friday. I do appreciate, uh, your presence. Welcome to the York City Council and the first speaker. In fact, what I'll do, I'll call three at a time. So I'll call Alex Cha, Michael Lee and Grace Yu, please come forward. Uh, Ms. Perry?
I'd like to ask if, uh, this is a, a serious issue and, uh, I think you, you would understand why I would rise to say this, that, uh, if, if you are willing, uh, and the folks have come here and they've been very patient, if you would allow them to have their full three minutes for those who, who decide they need three minutes, to allow them to use up the three minutes as we would normally do. This is a serious issue that, uh, affects the next 10 years of people's communities and, uh, I hope that you would give them that consideration. Should the speaker need that three minutes, they can use it, but would you allow them to have the regular three minutes?
It's normally two minutes.
It's normally two minutes?
Yeah, but what we will do is, uh, I'll, you know, try to give them a little extra to finish up their last statement. So let's start with Mr. Cha and again, I do appreciate your patience.
Thank you. Thank you, council members and ladies and gentlemen. My name's Alex Cha. I'm an attorney, also a board member of Warsaw Center, Creighton Neighborhood Council. First, I would like to state the city charter requires the city council to listen and consider public input. However, during the whole reprocessing progress, process, we have not been heard. We are still voiceless. So today, I would like to introduce to you all the folks from Creighton. If you guys could please stand up, if you're wearing a yellow shirt and if you've been here since nine o'clock and if you support our cause, please stand up and please give a shout out. We've been here way too long. Thank you. I want to thank each and every one of them for their support for this cause, for them being here since nine o'clock. It's been tremendous experience for us. We've always been in the back. We've been here for two and a half hours listening to all this. We're very upset, we're very upset at the city. Yesterday, we met about six council members and we told them our request. Our request is that we, the boundary of Creighton Neighborhood Council be unified and be in CD 13. That is our cause. Our next step, since you've seen us, since we are going to be voiceful from now on, is a lawsuit. We are working on the lawsuit against the city and believe me, that is coming. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And before the next speaker, just for the record, our council meeting did not begin until 10 o'clock. So you have waited before an hour and a half, which is not, uh, unusual when we have presentations. Uh, Michael Lee?
My name is Michael Lee, senior pastor at Yongnak Celebration Church. Uh, together with Yongnak Presbyterian Church, we make up nearly 10,000 Korean Americans in this community. Um, I'm, uh, first, I just want to say thank you to Councilman Reyes, whose seat is unoccupied right now, but we've had a wonderful relationship, uh, over the years. I think the support has been mutual between himself as well as the Yongnak congregation. And I hope to have that same sort of relationship with all the council members here in this chamber. I'm a preacher, so let me just preach for a couple of, for a minute or so and make a very striking point. In the Gospel of Mark, chapter three, there's a very intriguing occurrence that happens. There's a man who was possessed by a demon. Jesus releases the demon from him, heals him, and immediately he is charged by his enemies of using the power of demons to destroy demons, to which Jesus replies, "A kingdom divided against itself cannot stand. A house divided against itself cannot stand." You don't have to be religious to know the point that he's making. You divide people, you divide kingdoms, you end that kingdom and you destroy that people. Because we all know what division does. Dividing people silences people. Dividing people takes away their voice. Dividing people robs people of justice and robs people of fair representation. And so I want to say to the congressmen and women of this chamber, do not silence us by dividing us. Do not take away our voice. We heard in an earlier, uh, uh, earlier presentation, the importance of having a voice and when the voice is taken away, how people are forgotten. We will not be forgotten. Do not take away our justice and do not rob. Do not take away our justice and do not rob us of fair representation.
Thank you, Reverend. Thank you. Grace Yu.
Good morning. My name is Jane Oak. I'm coming out of turn only because I'm gonna speak for 10 seconds and then I'm gonna pass it on to Grace Yu, who's next. I am the president of the Korean American Bar Association of Southern California. And we have started a legal defense fund. I just wanted to inform you and that we are ready to go the, the long haul on this. We see a lot of irregularities and we want to address it. And I will pass it now to Grace Yu.
Yes.
And since the time and clock keeps running, we're just gonna have our friends line up behind us.
Long as they're in a proper order.
Then can we have the clock stop in between?
Grace, I'm gonna be very fair to everyone. I will call the speakers. The clock doesn't keep running. It stops and then there's the new speaker and they get new time. I'm gonna reset your time.
Thank you, sir.
But I'm just telling you--
Wonderful.
I've run this meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, not you.
Okay.
Now you get your time.
Good morning. My name is Grace Yu and I'm the executive director at the Korean American Coalition. I urge the city council to read the minority report. And in case you haven't seen it, I've brought copies for all of your commission, all of the council members. It was submitted by Commissioners An, Anderson, Kim, and Roberts. You need to read this to understand what the lawsuit is gonna be about. It's gonna be something that you really need to read through. Even the city attorney's appointee, Commissioner Julie Downey, voted against the commissioner's map and issued her own minority statement. You should read that as well. I understand the city attorney has told the commission, told you that the commission map is legally defensible. But that only means that it can stand up in court to defend the map, not that it will win. There's no litigator in the world that will tell any client that you have a guarantee of a win in court. And I'll tell you why. First, the commission's map violates the equal protection clause. The minority report describes the secret closed-door line-drawing meetings where the commissioners from CD 10 announced that its primary goal was to raise the black registered voters in CD 10 from 43 to over 50. And that's what was precisely done in the commission's map process. And when you consider the fact that he raised CD black voters from 43 to over 50, that's an increase of nearly 20% at a time when the African-American population in the city has shrank by approximately 20%. And that's really something that took a lot of effort. Second, the commission's map violates the city charter, which states that the commission shall keep neighborhoods and communities intact to the extent feasible. And so it is doable. It was shown three separate times. Throughout the process, it has been kept. I understand that council president refers to WCKNC as Too Big with 95,000 residents, but it was doable. We did it three times. The A-PAC map, the commissioner's map, and my own personal map.
Thank you. Thank you very much. William Mim. And if I mispronounce a name-- and if I mispronounce a name, I want to apologize in advance. Haypen M. David Rue. Please come forward. Mr. Mim.
Thank you. My name is William Mim, a voiceless man from Koreatown. Sir, I thank you for my life in Los Angeles for 64 years. Growing up, I have watched some voters getting pushed away by police dogs. I have seen fire department, water horse pushing voters away from the line. It happened in the United States. Luckily, we had a hero who dedicated his life for the basic and precious life of every Americans. Martin Luther King dedicated his life to remove that hurdle for everybody. That was 50 years ago. Asian presence in this city has been over 200 years. We have no voice. Korean-Americans came with a hope. They tried to live as a good American. They built a city that was hopeless pattern because of inflation by city employees misconduct. They sent their kids to school, put them to all avenues of mainstream to serve. And we sent 125 West Point cadets every year in 2,000 student body. And we try to live good Americans and because we have--
Fill that out.
--believe in American dreams. Now, please, don't dilute, miniaturize our population and take away our voice. What's the difference with police dog, water horse, or manipulation? Please don't substitute our American dream with the delusion of disguised tyranny. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mim. Haypen, and then David, David Rue.
As I look across the different council members in this chamber, I see that many have struggled in their own fight for justice and to be heard. And so we, as a community, are here today to also fight that fight. And I would say each of those fights that you have fought, I'm sure the odds were against you. And even for our country, when the colonies fought for independence from England, as well as the slavery that happened, each of those battles and fights, there was great injustice, there was great odds. But each time ultimately, justice prevailed. History told the truth. And so again, we're here today, we're the second largest minority community in the city, and we want a voice, we want access to the table. And each of you, when you fought your fa- fight, have claimed that really diversity is a strength and having access to the table and giving each person the opportunity to realize their God-given potential is something that is to be valued and honored and lifted up. So we're here today as a community asking for that chance, just a chance. So don't leave us out. We're here to contribute. We wanna be there with you. Thank you.
Thank you. David Rue.
Hello, my name is David Rue. At the risk of being asked to leave some of these boards that I serve on, I serve on the Asian Pacific Policy and Planning Council, the Wilshire Center Koreatown Neighborhood Council, the L.A. County Library Foundation, the Korean American Democratic Committee, the New Frontiers Democratic Club, and the Korean American Scholarship Foundation. Today, I am here as a voter and a resident of Koreatown in the city of Los Angeles. We are here today to fulfill our duty of civic participation. Koreatown is predominantly moderate to low-income, limited English-speaking, working-class families of predominantly Latino and Asians, Korean, Bangladeshi, Mongolian, and Filipino. We are asking for Wilshire Center Koreatown Neighborhood Council to be whole in the 13th district. Why the 13th? Because we're asking to, because our desire is to be in a coalition district. A district where there is no one interest that dominates, but is bound by similar communities of interest, yet diverse enough where we would be able to one day elect a council member who will be responsive not just to our needs, the Korean-American community, but to all communities' needs. We are not anti-Latino, we are not anti-African-American, we are pro the people. We want a community, just what every, like, what every other community wants. We want parks, we want community centers, we want low to moderate income development. Mr. Wesson, you have been a friend to our community and we thank you for all your past endeavors. Be our friend once more. Please let us go. Is six blocks worth, worth all this turmoil and potential lawsuit that will put mud in both our faces and the city of L.A.? This is not a Korean-American issue. This is not an Asian-American issue. This is an issue of empowerment and giving voice to the voiceless throughout the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Paul Song. Paul Song, Jane Oak, Reverend Chin, Full Gospel L.A. Church, please come forward. Jane Oak already spoke. So now, let me try. M. Kyu Su. From the Wilshire Christian Church, please come forward. Mr. Song.
Thank you, Mr. President, fellow council members. My name is Paul Song. I'm a physician, businessman, and political activist. My mom's mentor was the late Shirley Chisholm. My best man is African-American, and my Spanish is much better than my Korean. I come before you today not as a Korean-American, but as an Angelino-American, who has always stood up for what was fair, to seek justice and equal rights for all. The fact is that the last official redistricting process resulted in a community that was divided into four districts, making its voice very diluted, unheard, and with no one to be held accountable. What you've seen the last several weeks is the full awakening of an unfairly divided community that is finally standing up and speaking out to demand what everyone else wants, which is an equal voice, one that will be finally acknowledged, heard, and respected. We are not asking to dominate any other group or community, but rather to be given the same rights and opportunities to participate in decisions that affect our community and provide us with the potential to serve our city. The entire redistricting process has been flawed and little more than a Potemkin village. Despite numerous attempts to express our concerns and numerous comments by commissioners saying that they thought Koreatown should be whole and in one district, the overall 16-to-5 vote merely reinforced the perception that most of the 21 political appointees never intended to deviate from a predetermined script. I therefore ask you to all reconsider the fairness of this process and acknowledge the flawed result. I urge you to consider the wishes of a strong, viable community that despite being a solid contributor to Los Angeles' economy, has been given a disproportionately less say. Finally, I would like to close with a quote from Zechariah, chapter eight, verse 16. "These are the things that you should do: Speak truth to one another, render in your gates judgments that are true, and make for peace." Please reconsider this process. Thank you.
And just so you know, Mr. Song, the city, the council has just begun its meetings and hearings where it relates to this issue. In fact, we do have one tonight here at City Hall, and you're welcome to, not tonight, four o'clock in the afternoon. So is Reverend Chin from Full Gospel L.A. Church? And then the representative from Wilshire Christian Church?
I'll be translating. He is Reverend Chin from the L.A. Full Gospel Church. Our church, on Sundays, there's 1,500 people, and during the week, there's 3,000. And our denomination is the biggest denomination in the world. And he is also the president of the Beth Sayer University. And he is also the vice president of the Korean Church Council that is over 1,300. And he wants to voice the opinion of people to this council. And he also brought his son with him. And he wants to show his son the future of the city. And he wants to show his son that there's justice and peace in this place. he would like to express that the, the money that comes in through this community will be used justly. And that they, the second generation and the future generation would have dreams that they could really contribute to the city as well. And we would like for our district to become united in, in CD 13. And we want our Korean community to be an example for all the other minorities as well. We pray for your consideration. Thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you very much.
The honorable Councilmember Herb Wesson, as well as all the council members. My name is Reverend Park. I'm sorry, I'm the senior pastor of the Wilshire Christian Church on the corner of Norman D. and Wilshire. The map that we understand will be drawn in this 10th district, in which there will be 51% African-American and 9% Asian. It's a situation that really makes it challenging for our community to have a proper voice and representation. And throughout the redistricting process, we have asked repeatedly for the same thing. But to our dismay, our request has been not heard. And in Koreatown, there are various other community members, not just Koreans, but also Latino and other communities. L.A. Times says, "Korean town's boundaries are such." East to west is Hoover to Crenshaw. And from north to south is Melrose to 11th Street. We ask you to honor those boundaries. We have been told that there's a map that could be drawn in the 13th district, in which our community, as well as the Thai and the Filipino community, and altogether the API community, would be around 36%. In that kind of context, we believe that we have some kind of a fair chance of being able to have a representative that represents our community. We ask for your support in this effort. We ask again respectfully that you honor this map that we have been asking for a long time, the 13th District Wilshire Koreatown Neighborhood Council. Again, we thank the council president, as well as all the individual council members. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Arminak Norajanian, Chauncey Marjorell, and Robert Park, if you could please come forward.
Good morning, respectable city council members. Good morning, fellow Angelinos. My name is Arminak Norajanian. I'm a liberal tax and spend liberal Democrat. I ran for the seat of California State Assembly. And I built my electoral campaign on principles of racial integration, social justice, environmental protection, and technological revolution. I promised to raise taxes 50% against wealthy individuals and gasoline cell and corporation and oil-producing corporations, 50% in order to replenish state coffers, in order to keep increased social spending, in order to keep teachers and firefighters and police officers from being laid off. And since Governor Brown threatened with layoffs unless the vote is approved for raising taxes, I ask all Angelino community, Angelinos, to sign up for raising taxes against 3% against all gasoline cell corporations, which is a very conservative measure. I owe way greater increase in taxes against all wealthy individuals and corporations, 50% from where we pay now, against where we pay now, in order to bring about social justice. What's the price of social justice? I believe 49% of Angelinos will support me on this issue. Failed proposition, oh, just showed that about 49% of Angelinos support raising taxes against wealthy individuals. I also promise to ban and prohibit all so-called medical marijuana dispensers, with ripoff Angelinos big time, with silver livelihood and make them homeless. And I believe that Proposition 19 been rejected by 56% of Californians last year, which proved that actually all so-called medical marijuana dispensaries, where wolf and sheepskin should be banned effectively. And also, wage, wage a campaign against wasteful spending and-- And also, wage campaign against wasteful spending and ask city councilmembers to cut down egregious wages of $178,000 in half.
Thank you. Morning.
Good morning, President Weston, fellow honorable councilmembers. My name is Chansey Marterrell, Executive Director of the Thai Community Development Center. I'm here in a spirit of solidarity with my Korean brothers and sisters, whose community has gotten the shaft, one of the largest API community in Los Angeles. That sends a loud and clear message that our city leaders do not care about the API community, which constitutes 13% of the city population. The fact that the Korean community spoke out loud and clear what they wanted in the redistricting process, asserting their community consciousness and displaying their political coming of age, but in return received no concession, is a real travesty of the democratic process. Like everyone else, they deserve accountability, they deserve fair representation, they deserve empowerment, and they deserve a voice. So please reconsider the boundaries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Park, please. Mr. Park?
Good morning. My name is Robert Park, and I'm a current student at UCLA. Many of my fellow college students here have come as far away as Riverside this morning on the school day because this issue is that important to us. And personally, as someone who's been born and raised in Koreatown, and his family has endured events such as the L.A. riots of 92, this issue means very much to me. I challenge the council today to take a step back and consider how far Koreatown has come, thanks to the enormous sacrifices that our parents' generation has made. I'm so proud of the progress we made and how much our town now contributes to the city. However, Koreatown still has many solved problems, and there's still much room to grow. My parents have proudly owned and operated a small restaurant for over 25 years, but they tell me it only gets harder every year with the city policies that are hostile to small business. They feel like the city is supposing us at every turn and ignoring the cries of the Korean-American community. Furthermore, it's shameful that we don't have the basic essentials to the neighborhood, such as safe parks, a community center, or even a senior center for elderly. Our streets are still riddled with graffiti and litter. In short, Koreatown is sometimes not exactly the most pleasant place to live in and to business at. In order to change that, we need a dedicated leader that shares the same passionate vision as us. With our history and accomplishments, we absolutely deserve the stronger reputation. All we're asking for is a transparent and fair system that listens to the constituents, a unified coalition district, one councilman that will listen to our interests, and greater support from the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Mark, Mr. Mark, Mr. Mark Vargas, I believe it's Do Kim and Dollhouse Dude. Please come forward. Dollhouse, since you're the closest, just come on. Good morning, sir.
Yes, sir. Dollhouse Dude is the name they gave me. My real name is Juan Alcalan, and I represent every single human being in the world. I love kimchi, I love garlic. Anyway, my whole issue is that, you know, this guy's been working nine years on removing signs from the streets. I've been working four years on publicity to put out a formula so we end homelessness. It is entirely possible. We can do it. We are intelligent human beings. We are no baboons. Okay? Even the baboons are better than us. They have a place to live. So my concern is that we create a system where nobody can go homeless for any reason, and if disaster strikes, we have a way to back it up, so we rebuild that place for those people. It is very doable. You need to go to Google and look up Dollhouse Dude. I do use bad language on the street, but that is not a deterrent to tell us all, let's wake up and let's build a better world for us. We spend too much time telling each other about heaven and hell and things that are very menial. We need to go to the basics. Everybody on earth needs a place to live. The book that I wrote four years ago has a formula by which we can all go and create a better world.
Thank you, Mr. Dude. Is Mr. Kim, Do Kim? And Mark Vargas? Mark Vargas, are you here? Mr. Kim, please.
Thank you, President Weston, and also the city councilmembers. My name is Do Kim, and I am the board president of the KWE Center for Leadership. The KWE Center for Leadership is a nonprofit youth organization in the heart of Koreatown. We provide a lot of education and youth programs for the last 10 years. I am also a civil rights attorney. In addition to that, I have been a lifelong resident of Koreatown for 37 years, since I was 30 years old. I have seen Koreatown change over the years. I have lived in the 10th district, I have lived in the 4th district, I have lived in the 13th district. There is a reason why the Korean community here is out in force. There's a reason why the redistricting issue really strikes a chord with the Korean-American community, really at our soul. And that really has to do with what our community experienced in 1992, the 1992 civil unrest, what Koreans call sai-gu. At that time, LA experienced the worst civil unrest in the nation's history. And as a young student at that time, I majored in African-American studies, and I came back to Los Angeles, and I worked with the Black Korean Alliance at that time. I also came back in 92 to work on a lot of riot relief efforts. Now, very involved at that time with working with the Korean-American Victims Association, many of whom were demonstrating outside of City Hall at that time, wanting to meet with the mayor. Initially, the mayor did not want to meet. There are other issues. The help came too late at that time because no city councilperson at that time wanted to step forward to own Koreatown, say, "I have ownership over Koreatown." So the response was delayed.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Olga, okay, Olga Hall, Arnold Sachs, Mariko Khan. Ms. Hall, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. President, and members of the council. Today, I'm going to talk about something that it affects us all, you and everybody else all around the city. Have you looked up at the sky and seen all these white trails? They call them chemtrails. They're not the contrails that the regular get spused. It is contrails. And the analysis they have found is that it contains barium and aluminum. We are breeding this barium, aluminum, and we do not know the effects of it. It is in our water, it is in our air, it is in our ground. I want to give you some information so you can follow it, because it's something we all need to know. There's a documentary, Chemtrails, Earth's Soul, Soft Kill Weapons Documentary. There's another one, another website, it's called ForbiddenKnowledgeTV.com. There you will find a lot of information. You can always Google it, too. And there's another video, what in the world are they spraying? We need to know what in the world are they spraying and how is affecting us, and not only us, but our children. You need to take this seriously. This is part of your job.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sachs, followed by Ms. Khan.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sachs. A crisp hour worth of presentations this morning. Fascinating day yesterday, fascinating motion yesterday by Councilwoman Honest Jan Perry. Where was the publicity for all the people to show up yesterday when you read the motion? Fascinating vote yesterday, Councilman Weston. You recommended a no vote for the change in the boundaries, and somehow or other, when the vote came up, it came up as a yes vote. Point being, even the most amazing things can happen. Because when I questioned yesterday regarding getting advice from the city attorney on closed-session items, I was off-topic, off-topic, asking about getting advice from a city attorney who would give Councilman Reyes advice on how to step down from office on a commission that didn't exist. How to send in a letter of resignation to a commission that didn't exist? And he claimed that he got advice from the city attorney that allowed him to be reappointed to this new commission. And so, being off-topic, Councilman Kokorian said he should be off-topic, he should be told to move on. And what's the first question from Councilman Kokorian? Do we have any questions from the city attorney? Or for the city attorney? Off-topic. The point being, stupidity costs too much money. You being that stupid is costing too much money. People need to come here more often. Cluck, 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 cluck. Nine years on billboard, somebody mentioned. You just mentioned earlier, be conscious of the public's time. So how would they know if you're unconscious?
Thank you. Ms. Khan.
Good morning. My name is Mariko Khan. I am the president of the Asian Pacific Policy and Planning Council, and we are a collaboration of 40 different API organizations. And I want to let the city council know that APCON supports a redistricting plan that keeps Asian communities of interest intact. Secondly, that we support the creation of two API-majority-influenced districts. These positions are supported strongly by the results of the 2010 census. Now, I'm going to take off that hat and put on another hat, Mariko Khan, resident of District 11. And I would like to remind the city council that when we talk about the Voters' Rights Act, we talk also about polarized voting. And in the last two times that Asian-Americans have run for office, which was Flora Gil Kristaloff in District 11 and Warren Foratani in District 15, they were defeated. And I think one of the reasons why, as a citizen, is because there is no API-majority-influenced district. When we spoke up as APIs at the Board of Supervisors County Redistricting, we were not about race, we were about representation, and fortunately, that carried the day. So again, I am here to support my Korean brothers and sisters, because when I am walking the streets of LA and somebody spits at me and tells me to go home, I am seen as an Asian, and I want representation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Paul, Paul, Paul Park, Stephen J. Berheim, and Wayne Spindler, please come forward. Please come forward. Mr. Park?
Yes.
Go right ahead, sir. Welcome.
Thank you, President Weston and councilmembers. My name is Paul Park, and I'm the general counsel of the Caesar Chavez Foundation. As an Asian-American, I've worked at the Caesar Chavez Foundation for the last 10 years because I believe in my heart for what Caesar Chavez stood for, giving a voice to the voiceless, fighting for the rights of the defenseless, and fighting for equity and justice. And as you've heard from the litany of speakers today, that's what the Korean-American community here is here to do. And as you've heard also, we are here to let you know that we're in it for the long haul. Whatever happens with this vote on the redistricting, we're not going to go away. The lawsuits aren't going to stop, and we're going to come out and vote. I guess, I spend my free time volunteering for the city of Los Angeles as a commissioner for the neighborhood councils. I was at a meeting last night, and Councilman Englander was there, and every time I go to a meeting and I see the neighborhood councils, and I see all of the boring meetings, the long, drawn-out, three-hour meetings where there's a lot of frustration, there's fighting, there's a lot of imperfect democracy happening. I'm reminded by that process that this system, this city, is built on an ideal of being great, of trying to be inclusive, of trying to be representative of the diverse communities that exist in our city. And I want to remind you all of this to say that your vote is going to be historic.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Stephen J., and if you pronounce your last name for me.
Good morning.
Okay, let's show respect to the next speaker. Yes?
Stephen J. Bernheim, I'm a resident of Los Angeles, CD 5. I urge this council to adopt Councilmember Coretza's resolution opposing the state of California's repeal of the Hayden Animal Protection Law. This law is the only legal protection statewide that keeps alive a million kittens, dogs, puppies, cats that were lost or abandoned, keeps them alive long enough for them to be returned to their families, or long enough to find them homes. Little Dolce, my dog is one such dog that is happy to be alive now. Now, why should the city take a position since our city will maintain its commitment to keep our little furry friends alive as long as possible? Well, the reason why the city of angels' voice is needed is because of this city's and this council's position of statewide moral and ethical leadership. The little beagles, kittens, labs, and other dogs and cats that face a lonely death across the state and municipal impounds cannot speak for themselves. They cannot say they want to live, but you on this council can do that for them. Please support Councilmember Coretza's resolution when it comes up for a vote. Dolce and I beg you.
Well said. Okay, now, after Mr. Wayne Spindler, we'll have Hana Yun, Bobby Cooper, Peter Park, please come forward.
All right.
Mr. Spindler.
Yeah, we had a Korean war, and what happened with that was that you took the Korean peninsula and you divided it. Well, now, 2012, you're taking Koreatown and you're dividing it. So we got two dictators, Kim Song-Wesson and Kim El-Garcetti, and you're dividing up what should be one district under one councilman into two. Why is this being done? It's being done, I think, primarily because you're afraid of this community, because this community just kind of popped up on the map, investing hundreds of millions of dollars into a part of the city long abandoned, long abandoned by Jewish investors, long abandoned by Irish investors, long abandoned by Italians. These people fled the area, and the Koreans came in, and they saw that you could take this area and make it economically viable. Well, they did it. And now that it is, two of you guys decided to go ahead and carve it up, rather than give them the representation they deserve. This is the problem with the city, is that the city's gaining this reputation that if you come here and you're not part of the machine, you don't get to talk. And you go outside, and they don't have parks for the elderly people, they have to hang out like at a McDonald's. But these things don't get addressed. So they're not even asking you what they really should ask you for, is to have an Asian-majority district in the city council. They're merely asking you to take Koreatown in the neighborhood council and put it just... and put it just into one district, and that would be Garcetti's current district. So enough with this crap. It's time now to get on this issue and put that entire neighborhood council into one council district, which would be in Garcetti's district. Take it out of Weston's district. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for the record, this community did not just pop up. They have been working hard in Los Angeles for an awful long time. And we know all of the great things that they brought to that area. They didn't just pop up. Anyway, with that said, Hannah Yun, followed again by Bobby Cooper, and we'll close it out with Mr. Peter Park. Yes, Ms. Yun.
Hi, my name is Hannah Yun. Hello. My name is Hannah Yun, and I'm the president of the Korean-American Democratic Committee. Our mission is to promote the civic engagement of the Korean-American community. And we've been thrilled that hundreds and thousands of Korean-American stakeholders, along with Mongolian, Bangladeshi, Latino stakeholders of the Wilshire Center Koreatown Neighborhood Council have come out to speak at multiple redistricting hearings and even today, and at various city council hearings as well. We're also excited that they're unified in their demand. And their demand is to remain whole, represented by one city council member in a community with similar low-income, limited-English proficiency communities like historic Filipino town and Thai town, and along with entertainment and nightlife corridors like Hollywood and Los Feliz. Unfortunately, it's been really disconcerting because we really feel that our voice has not been heard. Especially when public input has shown that this map is feasible. The map has been submitted several times during various stages of the redistricting process. And we've come out, like I said, numerous, numerous times. Please don't vote in favor of the commission's latest map. And please don't tell us that our voice is not relevant. Please don't tell us that our vote must be diluted. Please don't tell us that our representation isn't important. So we ask that the city council respects the community's desires and submits revisions by March 8 to allow WCKNC to be kept whole in one city council district. And we think that Wright City Council District is CD13. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Bobby Cooper.
Yes, my name is Bobby Cooper, the owner and operator of Myanmar Sexy Fashions and Myanmar Samples Duplications. I'm here today because a few of these, what is it, Asian people have taken over my business, along with a few of your police officers assisting them. Now, I had, was over at the IRS because they're auditing me. And they're auditing that business. This man was offered money. I gave him a tax paper. He disappears and being prosecuted, full of sin of the law, just for trying to help me with my tax problems. Now, the name of these alleged culprits, you need to start with Sumato Lin, Attorney Sumato Lin. What is that? Bank of America manager, Steppen Swong. Yes, that's his name, Steppen Swong. Shang Kuk Wong. She alleges to be the owner of my bank accounts, of my business accounts of Myanmar Sample Service, which I've had for the past six years. The other lady, this is Myanmar, no, this is Myanmar Sexy Fashions. Samples, she's ordering credit cards on my business, Myanmar Sample Services. Schwong, S-Wong. The other person is Sunil, S-U-N-I-L. Last name, Ma, what is it, Ma Wanai? Now, all of this is Myanmar Sexy Fashions, my business that they claim to own. I can't get in my bank accounts because law enforcement's involved. Telling these people they don't have to answer to me.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Mr. Park, please. Thank you. Mr. Park. Mr. Peter Park. Thank you, Mr. Park. Mr. Park, you had your time, Mr. Cooper. Sergeant, Mr. Park, please come forward.
My name is Peter Park, and I'm the head of the Koreatown Senior Center. So before I start, I'd like to just really encourage and really appreciate and thank all the members of the Koreatown Senior Center who have come out waiting for this effort. When Council President Herb Weston first became elected to the council, I was at the time the executive director of the Koreatown Senior Center. At the time, there were many Korean seniors who were suffering, who needed help, even to the point of where seniors were discovered after their death, a month after the fact. And at that time, there were many Korean families, particularly struggling workers' families, who became to a point of desperation because they didn't have their help, that they decided to kill their families and kill themselves. And it was a common, frequent event in our community. And contrary to your perception of the model minority myth that exists, Koreans are struggling every day. And remember, at that time, I reached out to Michael Bay 10 times, asking for a meeting so that we could at least figure out how we could address some of these challenges.
Have him direct his comments towards me. I'm elected, not Michael, so that's directed towards me.
To the council members' office staff. But this council member's staff, where I ran into him, was at a commission meeting where he was helping nightclub and salon club business owners and helping them get their permission. My conclusion at the time was that Herb Weston was a corrupt politician.
My personal impression, that was my personal impression. And I asked all this body to listen to our cries and stop ignoring our community's voice. We need your help and your attention. When I called Ray's office, asking for some fix with the traffic light, it was done in one week. I really appreciate his office. When I spoke with Tom Robbant's office to build a senior apartment, it was done.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Never with your office.
Thank you. Now, that concludes our public general comment for today. Mr. Coretza, do you want to do a quick...
Sorry, dude, I'm going to send all my traffic complaints.
Wait. No, I have no more cards. I have no more cards. Wait, I didn't understand. What did you say?
I was told that his name was called, but he didn't understand, and that's why his turn didn't come.
Well, here, sir, I'll give you your time now. Just state your name.
His name is Ko Jin Sang. Jin Sang Ko.
Good morning. I'm the president of the Los Angeles Senior Center, as well as a member of the senior disability organization. And I just want to thank you for the tremendous work that you're doing for the city. And I feel that it is a travesty that Koreatown, which is one of the smallest areas in the city of Los Angeles, has to be divided by two districts. And so I've come today to ask again for your support to make Koreatown whole in one district. So honorable council members, council president, again, we ask for your support in putting Koreatown in the 13th district. Our country is a democracy, a government of the people. And so again, we ask that you will listen to the cries of the people. And I ask for your support in making Los Angeles a great city. Thank you again, and ask again for your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, Mr. Coretza. And Mr. Reyes, if you please take the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today, I've introduced a resolution urging the council to join me in the effort to oppose the repeal of the Hayden Law. This law requires that animal shelters hold stray dogs and cats for a minimum of four to six days. And if the repeal is allowed to occur, this would lead to many animals being killed in shelters often before their owners desperately searching for them are able to retrieve them alive. It also would eliminate the requirements for shelters to provide lost-and-found posting opportunities, record-keeping, necessary and prompt veterinary care. And it would allow the shelters to euthanize all other animals immediately, such as rabbits, pot-bellied pigs, hamsters, turtles, and reptiles. And so the great animals like the two of me today, who are cute, fun, loving, and deserve a great home, might not have that kind of opportunity should this legislation succeed. So since we had them here for a press conference earlier today, it's our opportunity now to look to adopt them both out. We have, first, we have Licorice, a wonderful female, black-and-white Chihuahua, who is the cutest dog I have ever seen. And maybe a council member will be adopting her soon. We also have Chewy, short for Chewbacca, because this is one big cat. Very docile and sweet. We spent a lot of time at the press conference together. A female domestic calico, about three years old. If you want to adopt either of them, come on down to the council floor quickly. Or you can call my office at 213-473-7005. Or you can also look to adopt any of the other wonderful animals at our shelters at laanimalservices.com. So come on down and adopt this wonderful cat and dog that we have here today.
Okay. Well, thank you for that presentation. Our next item, I believe is item 11, Mr. Clerk.
That is correct, your item 11. And for council's information, a committee report from the Housing Community Economic Development Committee has been submitted and is now before you for consideration.
My understanding, we've already had public comments. So unless the council wants to open a public comment, we don't need to. Okay, thank you. So public comment has already been established. We have two persons on the speaker queue. We have the chair, Councilman Cardenas, and Councilman Perry. We should follow that order. You okay, Councilman Perry?
I make a simple amendment to what we did in committee today.
Okay.
It's very short. The number 20 in the report that said instruct the CLA and the CAO when reporting the mid-year reprogramming, or sooner if possible, that the following projects be identified as priority projects to receive the funds from the revenue derived from the Cal Plaza leases: colon, and then I wanted to add in the words, "or other CRA loan repayments." And then I listed the projects, Estelban Meter, 6800 South Avalon, and dedicated source of funds for the city's new economic development entity.
That would be a friendly amendment, I must admit? Councilman, Cardenas?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Perry.
Okay. On advice of the city attorney, Councilman, the chair of the committee, I've been advised we can allow one minute because of the amendment changes. So we will do that. Mr. Clerk? We do allow one minute. We have with us Bo Sirran Unskul. Please come on up. I apologize, I butchered the name there. And then we have Arnold Sachs, and then we'll have Arminak Norjanian. Good day, ma'am. Please come on up. Give us your name.
Good afternoon, council member. My name is Bo Sevanen Skun, program director and business counselor at Thai Community Development Center. I'm here today to urge you to support the consolidated plan and get funding for our Thai Town Public Marketplace, which is a beside incubator in East Hollywood area. With the funding that we have already raised from the private and public sector, we will match your CDBG grant 1:1. As a beside counselor, I work directly with individuals who would like to start businesses. I have heard comments so many, many times that when we will build our Thai Town Marketplace incubator, can we be on your waiting list? We have started this project since 2006. Our project will create 54 jobs and 19 businesses in East Hollywood. We believe that it will benefit the local economy and also create jobs in the area. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker, we have Arnold Sachs.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for your good advice, Mr. City Attorney. The important part of this item, the 38th-year program. The county has a 38th-year action plan. Of that 38th year, $56 million for CDBG funds. $14 million of it, which is rolled over from previous programs. So the point being, again, with grants, money to be spent. Why is there $14 million rolled over if this is grant funding for projects? Why isn't the money being spent? Well, we're not going to get any answers out of the leadership here. We're certainly not getting any answers out of the leadership at the county. But again, 36th-year action plan, $14 million rolled over. So this is...
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. Our next speaker, Arminak Norjanian.
As a special city council member, I feel, Angelinos, actually endorse Resolution 11 as very important for the prosperity of all Angelinos. We actually need very much a community development consolidation plan and development block grants, home investment partnership program, and housing opportunities for people with AIDS. And we all need that kind of program. But we need to see that communication from a mayor. For real, politics should become more transparent, not clandestine, not secretive. We need to see the contents of that communication from Mayor Antonio Villaragossa. Well, actually, he doesn't think that, you know, use those city council members, you know, for his own, you know, and who'd wake them out of information, you know? And it's not a good thing to do. It's supposed to conduct public policy and public interest over people because we voted by the people.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes public comment. Councilman Cardenas?
Thank you very much, members. I know it seems a little quiet right now, but the fact of the matter is this is a very, very laborious process. And I want to take the opportunity to thank the staff for all of their hard work, the CLA, CAO, the mayor's office, the council staff, et cetera. I also want to give a special thanks to my chief of staff, Jim Dantona. I also want to give a special thanks to my Chief of Staff, Jim Dantona, who's been running point on this, and I think he did a phenomenal job of making sure that we culminate into basically 99% of, 99-plus percent of everything that we could do, we did do, and there are just a couple of wrinkles that hopefully in the reprogramming later on this year, we will be able to satisfy some of those matters, as Ms. Perry pointed out, at least one of them. But I think it's really important for us to understand that once again, we're dealing with federal funds that have been diminished once again, and which means it's really hard for us to continue to fund all of the programs that we need to fund at the level that we did last year, much less for us to ever try to get to the funding levels that we need based on the need that's out there. So unfortunately, the federal funds are diminishing once again, but at the same time, I think that we did a pretty darn good job of trying to adhere to as many of the priorities that we have as a city, and to adhere to these funds going to the community to maximize their effect in various parts of this city as well. In addition to that, I'd like to thank the members who are members of the committee, that we had some dialogue with various departments and clarified some fine-tuning as well. In addition to that, I need to add to the record, because there was something inadvertently left off of the report that's now before us, and it's a technical amendment, but it is only to reflect what took place in the report and in the committee, which is item number 22, and I'll read, it reads currently reduce the Family Resource Center-City Managed Program, parentheses, line item number 19, and the Higher LA 16 to 24 Youth Employment Program. So after the parentheses, line item number 19, we need to make sure that it properly reflects this wording, which says buy $55,000 immediately after the, excuse me, buy $55,000. So that's the technical amendment. Then on item 22, that after the parentheses, number 19, that it have the word by, and the number, number sign, excuse me, dollar sign, and $55,000. So that's the technical amendment, and that, in addition to that, members, every time we would make a change beyond the scope that we already approved in committee, that would change and put it out of balance, that $55,000 is reflected in the record, and it balance, is the proper balance of the con plan. So with that, I ask for your eye vote.
Thank you, Councilman Cardenas, Chair of the Committee. We also have on the queue, Councilman Zain.
Thank you. The San Fernando Valley, the 3rd District, Reseda, Canoga Park, Winnetka will benefit in this. $250,000 is going to be available for startup and capital improvements in those communities, and people who are interested, it'll be coordinated through the Valley Economic Development Center, VEDC, as part of the CD's Business Source Center programs. VEDC is going to open up a satellite office in Reseda to assist with this, so people who need information, businesses in the area of Reseda, Canoga Park, Winnetka, you can contact my office or the Valley Economic Development Center, and they will assist you with that. Again, I want to thank Councilmember Cardenas for bringing more money, help the valley and help those communities that are in need that used to get CRA funds which have evaporated, and this is a wonderful positive program. So $250,000 for the West San Fernando Valley, Canoga Park, Reseda, Winnetka, contact my office, and we will assist you with that, businesses in those three communities. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, seeing no one else in the queue, I think we should prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
All right. It's my understanding, Mr. Clerk, if Mr. Weezar is around, there he is, he wanted to go to special one. So if we could take that up at this point, do we have to recess?
No, no, sir. We have special one. It has been served.
And on the last item 11, if we could move it forthwith.
Very, very good, sir.
Everything should go forthwith. Per the City Attorney, everything goes forthwith. Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Clerk.
We have now before council, special one. It is a Weezar Reyes motion, and the City Attorney will speak to the findings.
Mr. City Attorney, I didn't know you were waiting on my queue.
Since the posting of today's agenda, city staff has learned that the CRA successor agency has placed on its March 15th agency the matter regarding the disposition of CRA parcels, including, including a parcel within the Elephant Hill Project area. Due to the impending council recess, immediate action is required to withdraw via Rule 54. Council file 11-1877-1 from Planning and Land Use Management Committee, and then instruct the planning department to initiate the open space zone change process as reflected in the motion. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before voting on the Rule 54 motion, and then considering the substantive motion. So there are three votes on this matter.
Okay, so the first vote is?
Is on the findings for the Rule 23.
Okay, let us on the findings, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Vote two, Mr. City Attorney.
That's on the Rule 54, whether to pull it out of committee.
On that item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Next item.
And now, now the actual motion is before you.
Okay, before we take up that motion, we have a card. Mr. Spindler, if you could come up now, and then Mr. Rosendahl is in the queue. Mr. Spindler.
Another problem we're having with the city is an increasing use of the special agenda item that is not being noticed before these, these public hearings, and nobody can understand. I mean, I have the, I have the agenda here, and I have the special agenda. I don't see special one on here. And this is, you know, I mean, enough stuff gets away with around here, but just to take a meeting and call a meeting, and then at the last minute, stick things into the, into the schedule that is called special ones, special A, special K, you know, it's, this isn't a way to run a city. And I thought the new president, I thought we had new leadership here. I thought that this kind of thing was not going to be tolerated, absences weren't going to be tolerated, and I thought that the special stuff was pretty much going to come to an end unless it was really something of a major urgent situation such as a budget, or the city's going to go bankrupt or something, but the same old games. And the only benefit is, is that you took it off the back of Garcetti, who can run for mayor and sit in his little chair, and then you're up there doing it. So I, I'd like to know, like, why do you have to have these special, these special ones and special twos, that what is so, what is so appropriate and wrong in, in taking it and putting it in a notice agenda so somebody can read it? What are we hiding here? What's, what's behind the details? And again, I mean, you know, we're going to sit here and, and the chairs are going to vote yes automatically unless somebody presses the no button. So let's have one person take the no button and go press, so when you do it, it'll go no, and then we'll have a little accountability.
Thank you, thank you. Mr., I don't see Mr. Rosendahl on the queue. Mr. Weezar, did you want to speak to this item?
Sure, thank you very much. Quite quickly, thank you, colleagues, for allowing us to Rule 23, this, to take immediate action. These are some parcels of property that the city owns, that we're currently working with the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy to create a, preserve these areas as open space. Given that the CRA is involved in this action, they're going to take some action, March 15th, I believe, and we don't, we're not meeting next week, so we needed to finalize our action that we are declaring these areas open space to preserve these beautiful hillsides for future generations, and that is our action that we're doing today. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Weezar. So, Mr. Clerk, why don't we, on that item, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, forthwith. Next.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number 12, called special for Councilmember Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, colleagues, just to briefly let you know what this motion is, and I'll put it back on consent. You know, the little city of Santa Monica is 86,000 people, and it's in the heart of my district. Over the years, they've aggressively dealt with Prop 13, which is rezoning part of their town for commercial that was residential. They made a big effort to attract businesses. They've been very successful. So there are 200,000 cars that go through my district every morning. Mr. Coretts feels the same pain I do, takes people half an hour to go a couple of miles, and everybody's fed up. Every street has drive-through moments from people from the valley, from the east side, the south side, and I must say, also from the South Bay. So the good news is, the Expo line is coming through, and it will take some of the pressure off that comes from either the east side or the south side that get on that light rail. But it doesn't solve my problems completely. It's a step. Right now, at the Bergamont Station, which is going to be one of the Expo stops, city of Santa Monica is talking about, you know, a lot of square footage. When I hear the different figures, somewhere it's between 800,000 square feet and 1.3 million. And they're going to create some more jobs. Whoopee doo to Santa Monica, but not enough housing. So the infrastructure for housing is critical, not just people driving through the 5th District and the 11th District. So this motion basically puts us at the table with Santa Monica and says, look, we want to be part of this process because it's impacting us. And Bergamont, by the way, is just a quarter of a mile from the border, so we're totally there every day, and you know, our gridlock starts about 7:30 in the morning, goes till about 10:00, and then starts again at 3:34 in the afternoon and goes until at least 7:00. It is absolutely paralyzing the west side, and you add that with the 405 and the widening, and God knows what that all means, but closing exits and, people are really, really fed up. So we're saying to the city of Santa Monica with this motion, not only do we want a seat at the table, but you better listen to what we have to say, because we need to work together. No one's an island in this great city. It's a megalopolis. So this takes our Department of Transportation people and our planning people and meets with Santa Monica and says, look, how do we make this work for all of us? Let's work together. So that's what this motion is about, and I wanted to just call it special to make that comment, and obviously, colleagues, I ask for unanimous support of this.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. On that item, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Mr. Clerk, where are we?
Forthwith with that, please.
Yes, forthwith. The City Attorney has already deemed that everything goes forthwith today, so by his edict, forthwith.
Actually, I've advised.
Okay, you've advised.
Mr. President, that brings us to item 13. I might advise that there is a substitute motion, motion 13A, motion LeBange Wesson, that has been submitted to council and is now before you for consideration.
Mr. LeBange.
It's for an eye vote. It's been circulated.
Now, that was a riveting speech. Let's open the roll. Eyes the cards. What item? Arnold Sacks.
I held this item because of the phrase in here, competitive sealed proposal method for the bids here. By the way, I thought you had a process in place at World Lawa for bids. Didn't you have a process in place when a general contractor was chosen, when you had several, when Dim Jin was chosen to be the overall lead for all the contracting going on, where the head of the airport, ah, what the hell's her name? It escapes me now. It was a 4-1 vote, she came back in and sat in a second meeting, and the vote turned around to 5-0, and didn't you have a process in place when you had the contracts out for the concessions at the terminals? You need another process between those two processes? You need a third process for these new contracts by, for the, to let the construction manager at risk or designated build contracts? What will be different about this process that's different from the first two processes you have in place? So in essence, you have three processes now for contracts at Lawa. One, for the overall oversight of all the construction, that turned out to be a farce. The second one, for the food concession at some of the terminals, that turned out to be a farce. So how far down the highway before the public finds out that the third process turns out to be a farce?
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Okay, members, let us, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Item 23, Councilman, excuse me, Council President, called special for cards.
Mr. Sacks, 23, you have one minute left, I've been informed.
Confer with legal counsel. Would that be the City Attorney's office, or would that be outside legal counsel? Because if it's outside legal counsel, maybe you can include in this settlement what outside legal counsel is getting paid. But if that would be the City Attorney's office, I was asked yesterday, any questions of the City Attorney by the council members? Well, I'm not a council member, but I have a question for the City Attorney. What kind of advice would you give, or what would you call giving advice, where you say, hey, it's okay to resign from a commission that doesn't exist? Just don't let it happen again. And by the way, thank you for the payment, because it's city money that you're paying. It's city funds being paid to the City Attorney. It's city funds being paid out in these payments. Money that could be used for something else. I don't know. Maybe to improve the meals for the council chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Mr. Clerk, it's my understanding that because this is a closed-session item, that it needs to be read by you.
Mr. President, in regards to item 23, in the case entitled Christina Ibarra versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to reject the plaintiff's offer of settlement.
Okay, with that said, prepare to vote. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
And that brings us where?
That brings us to item 28, called special for Councilmember Zain.
Mr. Zain.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson.
Oh, wait, you know what, Mr. Zain, I do have one card. Would you like to take the card first? Mr. Wayne Spindler, please come forward on item 28.
You see this a lot around the city, CBS DeCal, and these are these advertisements you see on bus stops, for example, and also on some of the billboards around town. And the biggest thing about this item is to look at the fiscal impact statement. I've read the fiscal impact statement this morning because there isn't any. Neither the city administrative officer or the CLA has completed a financial analysis of this report. And then there's the community impact statement, I read that because, of course, like a blank page, none was submitted. And they will, they will write history books when this city is, is taken off the map and de-incorporated for bankruptcy, because one of the things they're going to look at is, you have, what, 65,000 city employees, not including subcontractors, and nobody can prepare a report on the fiscal impact of something involving tens of millions of dollars a year, and a community impact statement, nobody can prepare a summary. I, I know children in schools that, that could go on their computers and they could put together something better than this, and we're paying these people six-figure salaries and million-dollar pensions and bonuses to do nothing. And what you're going to wind up doing is filing some sort of report, and in the end, the city's not going to collect the money it's owed, or they're going to collect way less of what they're owed, and this is leading to what the Miguel Santana talked about the other day, that there is a financial Armageddon facing this city. So why not, before you automatically vote yes on these items, why not complete these reports? Or just confess to everybody that nobody's doing anything, that it's just on automatic pilot, one way or the other. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Zain.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could have the Controller's representative and the and the Bureau of Street Services come forward to the center table. This matter, colleagues, involves an audit by our Controller. The CBS Deco contract called for us to receive, we thought, $150 million in revenue. And unfortunately, we did not receive that. Less than 53 million. Well, we thought maybe that, but it turns out 29.9 million. And there's some issues and concerns, and we need to look at this. We need to come in with a plan to restructure this, to come in with a better plan for the City of Los Angeles when it comes to these shelters. These aren't bus benches. These are the shelters where there's advertising. And you'll see, they are at a different location throughout the city. So if we can hear from the Controller's office and then the Bureau of Street Services. Mr. Controller's office.
Please, begin.
Good afternoon. My name is Wally Uwale. I'm with City Controller's Office, Audit Division. Just a little background on these contracts. Back in 2001, the Board of Public Works, on behalf of the city, executed a 20-year agreement from January 2002 to December 2021 with Viacom Deco, that's now called CBS Deco, to operate the city's coordinated street furniture program. The Bureau of Street Services administered this agreement. The contract requires CBS Deco to operate a street furniture advertising program on the city's behalf. Under the terms of the agreement, the city gave CBS Deco the exclusive right to sell and display advertising on specific items of street furniture, which are installed and maintained by the contractor. In return, residents enjoy the use and benefit of city-approved street furniture items, and the city receives a minimum annual fee and an opportunity to share in the revenue generated from advertising. The city anticipated receiving up to 150 million from this contract. However, the revenue goal was contingent upon the city issuing permits for all furniture items as specified in the contract rollout schedule. The contract anticipated that all furniture items, which included automated public toilets, transit shelters, newsstands, and public community pillars and kiosks, will be permitted within the first two years of the agreement. The primary objective of our audit was to determine whether the city has received all the revenues it's entitled to under this agreement. The audit also assessed the city's process relative to permitting street furniture to identify the reasons for untimely approvers, which have impacted the amount of revenue received by the city. The audit report discusses three issues: annual fees, site approval process, and a six-year review. As far as the annual fees, through the first 10 years of the agreement, the city could have received at least $53 million in revenue. However, the city only received about 30 million, a potential revenue loss of over $23 million, primarily due to the city's untimely approval of permits, specifically for pillars. As of December 2009, the city had permitted about 69% of the contractual number of ad panels. However, both the city and the contractor had an understanding that the fee adjustment was contingent on the city's permitting each specific type of furniture item within the rollout period. Before advancing to the next rollout period, the city is only receiving credit for 12.4% instead of the 69%. According to everybody that was involved in the contract, regardless of the total number of permits issued by the city, because the city failed to issue permit for pillars at specific locations requested by the contractor within the specified time period in the project rollout, the program has yet to move out of the forced rollout period. City officials and the contractor stated that the approval of pillars within specific council district during the forced rollout period was necessary to make the program economically viable for the contractor. By 2008, when the city had finally approved necessary pillar that had been projected through the fourth rollout period of the rollout schedule, the contractor indicated it was no longer economically viable to make capital investment necessary to install those structures. Therefore, CBS Deco did not apply for permit to install those pillars. These caused a disagreement between the city and the contractor as to whether the city has fulfilled its obligation and should be compensated at a much higher level from 2009 forward. Since 2007, there have been numerous attempts by the city and the contractor to negotiate an amendment to the contract whereby the pillars, that was the subject of the disagreement, will be removed in exchange for other contract modification. However, none of those were accepted. If the contract is now modified, the annual fee adjustment will continue to be calculated the way it's been done now, then the city could lose additional 57 million in potential revenue over the remaining 10 years of the agreement. Therefore, our recommendation is for the city to renegotiate the contract to the mutual benefit of the city and the contractor. Also, we look at the permit process. The contract sites and permit approval process is very cumbersome, and it's essentially contributed to the loss of revenue. Based on the sample of installed sites, we know that it took an average of 129 days for the city to approve the sites and permit application. The untimely approval, again, was the main reason for the loss of potential revenue. Although the CLA previously recommended a contract amendment to address the site approval process, the amendment was never formally executed by the council. In order to maximize the potential revenue, under this contract, we recommend the city and the contractor to mutually develop and include a revised site approval process as part of any future contract amendment. The only other item that we discuss in our report has to do with a six-year review. The agreement requires a six-year program review that would have allowed the city and the contractor to identify and discuss any issues or problems that were not originally anticipated by the contract so that both parties could mutually agree on appropriate adjustments and modifications to the program to achieve the service and revenue goals. A six-year review was not conducted. In 2008, city officials and the contractors agreed to forego that pending the ongoing contract negotiations. However, the contract was never amended. Though the program is now in its 11th year, we believe that the review should probably still be done.
Okay, let's get to the point.
And that's basically all the issues that we...
The point is, we didn't receive the 53 million that we thought we would receive. We received 29.9. If we don't do something with this amendment...
That's correct.
There's a possibility we'll lose $57 million. So the bottom line is, we need to amend this contract. We need to come up with a new standard, a new permit process, so we can receive the dollars that we anticipate to go to the general fund. And part of that goes to the different council districts throughout the city. So we've had problems with this. The audit revealed those problems. And we need to make a correction so it can provide the service for the people that want to occupy those benches that are waiting for public transit and the kiosks for advertisement. And if we don't do it, then we're probably going to lose 57 more million dollars. Correct? That's the gist of it?
Yes.
All right, so what we need to do now on this particular item is have the city attorney and Building and Safety, Bureau of Street Services, I should say, Building... Bureau of Street Services, CLA, and request the city attorney to prepare and present a year-six review of the contract in 30 days to coordinate street furniture program to include recommendations for contract amendments. That's what we need to get done. So we'd ask this council to direct that... We thank you for the audit, but going forward, we need to have Bureau of Street Services, CLA, city attorney amend this so we can generate what we want to generate. Bureau of Street Services?
Yes, thank you, Councilman. Ron Oliver, Assistant Director, Bureau of Street Services. To your last point, Street Services, CLA, and city attorney have already began negotiations with both J.C. Deco and CBS Outdoor corporate representatives. We've been in intense negotiations the last couple of days. We're expecting a formal proposal and list of issues as far as a program review and moving forward from then next week. The committee, the AGE Committee, directed us to come back with a report in 30 days with, again, the six-year program review, where we stand and how we move forward. And we are well on our way already to implement those. I just want to say real quickly, if I may, we do want to thank Controller Wendy Grohl and her staff for working cooperatively with us over several months. Very complicated contract. I think the result was a fair, thorough report. We agreed to disagree on several findings, and I think we've put that in a written response that's on the council file. But we do agree with the three recommendations that have been outlined as far as negotiating an amendment to maximize revenue, streamlining, shortening the approval and permitting process, and formalizing and submitting the program review to you.
Okay, thank you. I want to also commend the controller for bringing this forward, for the information. The bottom line is, we need to provide that service to the people who use public transit, at the same time generate the revenues so we can use that for the benefit of the people of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. ...
So that'd be my recommendation.
Okay, I have two other people on the queue. Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, I agree with my colleague Dennis Zine. But just so people appreciate what happened here, Ron Deaton, who was kind of the unelected member of the city council because the council had issues, agreed with a deal that divides the revenue between 15 districts, but puts the signage especially... I'm talking about the pillars, not the benches, which are fantastic. And God bless you. And other aspects are great. But the issue became the 4th district, the 5th district, the 11th district, and the 13th district got a substantial amount of these signs. I became Chair of Public Works when I first got elected, and we vigorously put them all over the district where we got support from community. But then the cup runneth over in a couple of places, like Brentwood, the Palisades, and Venice on certain areas. So we couldn't put them all, even though the percentage was dramatically wanted by the vendor because, in their mind, their advertising had certain appeals to certain areas. So as that discussion went on and on and on, the reality is, the moment now is a good one because people are going to sit in a room and try to figure out where to take this next. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And with that hopeful conclusion, they'll come back with a project proposal that will make sense for us. Is that how we see it?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, so I just want to thank everybody's participation. The Controller, Mr. Zine...
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Thank you. Mr. Englander, Mitch Englander.
Thank you, Mr. President. $23 million for short?
That's correct.
That's insane. Who is... I've got to believe that there's... Somebody somewhere had the ability to say, "No, we don't want these." And I thought it was a part of the original contract where it wasn't discretionary, either by a community or a council district. How did the city... You stated when you first opened, the city failed to process these. How did the city fail to process them? Was it just a backlog and paperwork? Or was it an approval process?
It was essentially approval process.
Approval process.
Right. The revenue is contingent upon the city approving, issuing permits for certain numbers.
Were these... Were these numbers equal across all, throughout the city? Were they unjustly imbalanced in certain communities? What were the numbers?
The numbers were not equal across communities. The... This is really a matter of the economics. The public policy issues on this for the city with the transit shelters and the APTs and generating revenue, those were generated primarily by ad faces on pillars and other things. And the economics are such that the revenue generation depends on the area the ad faces are in. When the contract was originally sent forward to the council on the floor, the council amended the contract that would... To allow each individual council office, through neighborhood councils, to, in essence, have the final say on what the location of the street furniture would be. And that process was the reason for the substantial delays in having some of those furniture installed in, as Mr. Rosendahl indicated, in the areas that the contractor was looking for, for economic reasons.
Got it. And so how is this amendment, if you will, going to make up or change the approval process to complete the contract?
Well, we're in early discussions on that. I don't know at this point, Mr. Englander, what a new approval process will be. We're going to need to... Again, we're 10, 11 years into the contract. We're going to have to work with the contractor to find out what both sides want out of this and how that might be achieved.
So with this amendment on this contract, my concern is, if we're not changing the approval process, all we're doing is generating more time on the contract, perhaps to avoid a litigation for our failure to complete the installation and get approvals. And I don't understand why, if that's the obstacle that brought us here today, that... And it was stated earlier that it was perhaps the CLA that negotiated this. I believe it was the council that approved it. It was the council that, as you said, in my recollection as well, that Jerry Miller just said, was it the council actually negotiated this directly on the council floor the last day I came in as well. This approval process still hinges on conclusion for this. And if we haven't fixed that part of it, is there any ability to do that? Where perhaps if there were, as an example, three or four recommendations made in a councilmatic district, and they can select one of the three or one of the four, that the alternative locations would then be picked? Is there some way to streamline this or just get out of it completely? Because...
Well, it's important to note that at this juncture, many sites have been approved. The problem is that it took so long to get those sites that permits have not been pulled. Of course, the economy is much different than it was, you know, early in 2000s. And the term left on the contract is such that there's a question about whether or not CBS Deco can recover their capital costs by making the investment with only nine years left on the contract. So it's not so much a matter of the approval process now because a number of sites have been identified. It's moving forward and determining what works best in the context of the remaining contract.
So you think this is the best deal we can get with what's been presented?
Well, again, nothing is being presented to you today. We're going to go back and negotiate.
On the audit, so we're going to go back and negotiate?
Yes.
I mean, is that... That's the best we can come up with based on what the audit's shown? And do we think we can actually get a negotiated deal? Are they... Is there a willing body on the other side?
We are optimistic. Yes, we are optimistic.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. LeBange.
Controller's officer, whoever. Who, if you work at In-N-Out or work at McDonald's, you could call and find out how many McNuggets they sold or strawberry malts, you know, between 10 and 12 today, right now, on a computer. How do we keep track of this? And how timely? Would you... And is there systems that need to be improved, whether it's Street Services, to give you a factual, real time? Do you understand my question?
Not exactly factual.
Okay, you're the auditor. So how... And there's the administrator. And we've got to look at this money that either is coming or not coming. There's 945 bus shelters. There's advertising. Do we look at, what was it, for June 2008, 2009, 2020? What systems do we have? And, members, I'm just saying, as we go forward, and I know it's tough economic times, I think we really need to improve our systems because there's somewhat antiquated system. Am I correct on that?
Well, we had no problem getting information from Street Services.
Could you get it today?
Yeah, when we asked for the information, we received it.
And how fast do you get it?
It was timely, in terms of...
What's timely?
When you do the request, but... Yeah, I mean, we didn't time too terribly.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, Mr. Miller, I'm going to direct it to Mr. Miller. Give us, maybe not this year, next year, more timely ability through systems. They did invent the computer. They did invent the internet. You can push a button and find things out a lot faster than someone going and counting by hand or whatever it is. I just disappointed sometimes in our systems that are not in a modern age. We're already in the second decade of the new century, and they're still seeing things that we should catch long before we have to come to some kind of audit. Thank you, auditors. So that's what I was just speaking to.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LeBange. Mr. Alaco.
Councilmembers, I rise to the defensive staff on this one. At least the Street Services staff. I looked at this issue in several different iterations as a member of the Public Works Committee. But I have to tell you that the fundamental problem here is the contract was poorly written. And it had nothing to do with Street Services. It had to do with the attorney that wrote the contract. And this is my opinion. They wrote a horrible contract that we could not... That they put us in a... us in an impossible situation where the contract engine was supposed to be driven by the availability of signage opportunities for the contractor and the fact that where the peak opportunities for profiteering were in areas where the council members simply refused to put up signs. So because we inserted that last-minute amendment, and I wasn't here at the time, but when that last-minute amendment went in to essentially give power to the neighborhood councils and the council member, it really undermined the profitability of this contract. There was no way to implement it. There were other inadequacies in the contract that had to do with tracking. The contractor was not very forthcoming with information, and it was--it's just a very, very difficult contract for the department, for the street services folks to implement. Now, we can ask street services to do a thing, but if we then impose on them a contract that is fundamentally flawed, we can't expect them to meet the goals. And in this case, we continue to lose money because there are certain communities that will not accept responsibility for having street shelter or bus shelters in their neighborhoods. And I think that's deplorable, because the people that use those shelters are people that come from other neighborhoods to come and babysit their kids and clean their houses, and yet they will not provide them with the shelters that they need in the rain and sunshine when they are coming to provide those services. And if we're going to fix this problem, we need to make sure that those communities cannot block these people who are using the shelters from getting access to those shelters and, at the same time, allowing us to gain some revenue from the process. So I wouldn't pick on street services on this one at all. They've had to deal with a very horribly written contract.
Maybe we should go to number two. Mr. Zine.
Well, Mr. Alakon, you're exactly correct. And I remember when the lobbyist was in the council chambers pushing this particular contract, and then they put this little caveat that said, "If the community doesn't want it, it's not going to happen." So that's the problem that we ran into. Hopefully, with this amendment, we can make some corrections. But the way it's going is not the way we want it to go. So the direction that we've already stayed is what we want to follow through with. Again, thanks to the Controller for bringing this forward. If the Controller didn't do this audit, we would not know about this. But if we look at photo red light, the audits show we were losing money. We look at this, we're not gaining what we should be gaining. And then what the Controller does is bring these issues forward. It's our responsibility and obligation to change it so it doesn't continue, so we can make it better. And that's what we hope to do. So in 30 days, you'll come back. Mr. Miller, with your leadership, you can hopefully make it better. If not, then you will be in that hot seat next time. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Zine. On this item, let's open a roll. Close a roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, the ayes have it. Mr. Zine.
Number 29. Item 29. Called special for councilmember's eye.
All right, number 29. This involves city street furniture program. What we want to do on this particular item is strike number two and number three and keep number one and number four. To approve those, and what we want to do with this is find out how many contracts are out, as we just discussed, with this particular contract. How many other contracts are out? We know the bus bench contract we had problems with, one of this one we had problems with. So we're asking for the public work to come back with the numbers, exactly where we are on these contracts. Are we doing what we're supposed to be doing, or do we have to make some modifications? And this would be an entire report on all the contracts that we have for--through the Board of Public Works with street furniture and any and all other types of programs. So we'd request that we approve item number one and number four on number 29, and we strike number two and three, since those were heard in number 28, item number 28. That'd be the direction.
All righty then. On that item, let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, Mr. Clerk. Didn't you say we needed to clean up some business from yesterday where related to a continued item?
Yes, sir. Item number two from yesterday, council file 11-1913, should be reconsidered to continue to March 20th. It inadvertently was continued to a date that council is on recess for National League of Cities.
Okay, well then, let's first vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next.
That brings us to the actual item itself. It should be continued to March 20th, sir.
All right, and without objection, that'll be the order.
Very good.
Where are we at now?
Mr. President, that brings us to the special meeting. Would you like to recess the regular and go into the special?
Yes. So let's recess the regular meeting and let's go directly to the special meeting.
Very good, sir. Alakon Buscayeno-Cardenas, Englander Garcia, Cricorian Labange, Parks Perry Reyes, Rosendahl, Zine Wesson, 12 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
All right.
Mr. President, item 27 is an item for which public hearing has not been held, and it is also scheduled for closed session. 10 votes are required for consideration. Council should first take any cards on the matter and then go into closed session.
Do we have any cards?
I believe, sir, that we do.
Okay, and there's 27 is Mr. Sax. Is Mr. Arnold Sax here? I think he left. So let's now, again, one last call for Mr. Sax. So listen, do we defer this to Mr. Cricorian at this time?
No, sir, it is scheduled for closed session.
Okay, so if everyone could please leave the council chambers at this point. Sergeants, if you could make sure that individuals not associated with this matter will exit the council chambers. the council chambers. Now we're live.
Mr. President, would you like to adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular?
Where are we at at this point in the council meeting?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Consider them posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Perry requests to be excused on March 2nd for city business.
Without objection.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused on March 20th for city business. Councilmember Kriorian requests to be excused on March 28th for city business. Councilmember Perry requests to be excused on April 13th for city business. Councilmember Labange requests to be excused on April 17th for city business. Councilmember Labange requests to be excused on April 18th for city business. Councilmember Labange requests to be excused on April 20th for city business. And Councilmember Perry requests to be excused on June 13th for city business.
Okay, without objection on all of those items except for Mr. Labange's. No, without objection.
Second it.
Where are we now?
The desk is clear, sir.
Okay. Members' announcements. Mr. Labange.
A great reptile exhibit is going to open tomorrow at the Los Angeles Zoo and through celebrations throughout the weekend. We thank everybody for the support of the Los Angeles Zoo, and we invite the public to that as well. Also, we're having a groundbreaking for the river supply conduit Headworks Reservoir, which is right off of Forest Lawn Drive, which will help improve water quality for all of Los Angeles. And that is tomorrow morning as well. But good things are happening in and around the city.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kriorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Just wanted to announce that the Budget and Finance Committee will be conducting, as it has in past years, a number of meetings on the road in order to provide information to the public and also draw the public's input about our budget. And the first of those meetings will be this evening. It will begin at 6 o'clock PM, and it will be at Fairfax High School in Room G90. So the public is welcome to attend our meeting. There will be also meetings on March 19th at the Board of Harbor Commissioners in San Pedro, March 20th at the Women's 20th Century Club in Eagle Rock, and March 28th in Van Nuys City Hall. All of those meetings will begin at 6:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Kriorian. Members, any other announcements? Well, if we could all rise for adjourned motions. Mr. Rosenthal. Adjourned motions, members. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Theodore Roosevelt Henry Jr. passed away March 2nd. Born May 28, 1932, in Toledo, Oregon. Lived a glorious life filled to the brim with loving family, great friends, travel, and adventure. Raised with his five siblings, preceded are his sister Barbara Ann, Jerry Henry, and Daryl Henry. They preceded him in passing. Electing to work at a lumber mill instead of finishing high school, completed his GED while in the United States Navy, served his active duty. Korean War, working with Corsair airplanes on the aircraft carrier USS Kursarg. He went to attend San Jose State University, graduated a bachelor's in mathematics as a distinguished student. While in San Jose, met love of his life, Grace Phyllis Saunders. During their courtship, purchased a 1929 Model A Ford with the engine in the back, built the car with Grace's younger brothers. Ted and Grace have been married for almost 59 years, raised six children, blessed with nine grandchildren, living mostly in Southern California. Continued to maintain the Model A, giving family and friends rides on special occasions. The Model A is still in the family today. Pioneer in computer programming, worked at Systems Development Corporation in Santa Monica for over 30 years. Helped develop satellite technology, military defense systems, and the first 9/11 emergency response systems in the city of Los Angeles. Retirement took him to exotic trips, Africa, Czechoslovakia, Australia, New Zealand. Kayaked to British Columbia in Alaska, viewed polar bears up close in Alaska, grizzly bears in Montana. Enjoyed trail building in Idaho, and lots of hiking and skiing in Europe, as well as Colorado and Utah. Fulfilled a lifelong dream to own a Jaguar XKE. Took opportunity to build a 1969 XKE from the ground up with the owner of a local Jaguar auto repair. Later became a very good friend. Enjoyed many trips, car shows, sharing his dream car with anyone interested in hearing his story. Services are going to be Friday, March 9th, 1:00 PM, Oakwood Cemetery in Chatsworth. Survived by his wife Grace, his children, many loving family and friends. May he rest in peace. Theodore Roosevelt Henry Jr.
Thank you. Mr. Parks.
I'd like to request that we adjourn in memory of Warren Logan Bryant Jr. Born in 1947, passed away February 2012. Warren enjoyed promoting singing talent. He also had a love and passion for taking photos. He was born in Pennington, Alabama. Before he was two, he actually was rescued from a burning farmhouse by his mother. He suffered most of his life with the sickle cell anemia trait, and for years had to take the painstaking treatment. After graduating from high school, he worked as a clerk, Department of Agriculture, and later a food inspector. He attended night classes at Cleveland State University and majored in sociology, and in '73 earned a bachelor's degree. He then transferred to Los Angeles, California, to work for the Department of Labor. Received a certificate in labor law from UCLA. Retired in 2009 as a mediator for the National Labor Relations Board. He worked for over 44 years for government. He was a member in good standing of the Highland Heights Masonic Lodge 59 in Los Angeles. Although he had dreams of coming to Los Angeles, become a recording artist or a movie star, that did not work out. But he spent a good deal of his time on his first love, which is the Phillips Temple CME Church in Los Angeles, where he's a member of the choir, a steward, a late council president, and an assistant Sunday school teacher. He loved the Christian Methodist Episcopal Church and loved being a part of the programs. He survived by his mother and a host of family, friends. He was interned in Cleveland on February 22nd. And that's for myself and Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Members, any other adjourned motions? Okay, this meeting is adjourned.